Call the Finance Subcommittee meeting to order. Tab, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hock?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larabee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. I might as well read this now. "Pursuant to the open-meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible." Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." So tonight, we're going to look at Group One, Elementary Schools. Unless someone has a preference, I'm going to follow the order on the agenda. So, we have some money to spend this year wisely, and hopefully, everybody's following the plan. Let's give it a rip. We'll go first with Fonseca, Alicia Lisi.
Good evening. Thank you. So, the budget that I'll be presenting to the school committee this evening is going to be a little different than previous year's budgets. At this point, the Fonseca Elementary School is finishing up their third year of turnaround, which means that at the end of August, all turnaround funds that were provided through the state for the turnaround of Fonseca will sunset. With that being said, some of what is being proposed tonight is to absorb some of these positions that have helped with the turnaround work, and so I'll highlight some of those positions that are coming off the grant and onto the operating budget, as well as any changes that we'll have from moving or adding any new positions based on the needs of the school. So, looking at the demographics over the last few years of the Fonseca school, we have seen a significant increase in our ESL population. So, at the beginning of turnaround, we were looking at about an 18.9% of English language learners. Now, we're at about 27% English language learners. Our special education population has also increased at about five percentage points. So, we do have a lot of students with some significant needs that we needed to look at and consider as we went through. So, the things I think I'll start with are the items that are coming off the school redesign grant that we're looking at keeping on the Fonseca budget. So, if you have, Kevin, do they have the same papers?
Yes.
Yes.
They have?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, at the back of the Fonseca Elementary School paperwork, there are some positions that are highlighted in blue. Are they blue in the middle?
Yes.
All right. So, those are positions, there's a student support coordinator position, a parent community worker, and a pre-K paraposition that were paid for through the grant over the last few years. At this point, we're looking, since the funds will be gone, to have those three positions be absorbed into the school operating budget to sustain the work that those positions have to do. In addition to that, the other two items for extended learning time for administrators, as well as extended learning time for teachers, as a part of the turnaround, we had increased the school day by 20 additional minutes as a strategy to implement morning meetings for a sponsor classroom. But also, we, that additional time per day allows us to have an early release date per month, where teachers are able to receive three hours of professional development and planning time. So, those are the items at this point that we were looking at moving from the grant to the budget. Another position that was added to the operating budget from a grant was item number 70, which was a classroom paraprofessional. That was a position that had been on a grant in previous years, and as a part of Dr. Malone and the school department looking at trying to shift some of those into the operating budget, that was one of the classroom positions that we were able to afford. As we look at the continuing turnaround of the Fonseca school, although the funding will be gone through the state, depending on what our accountability levels will be, will determine whether or not we'll receive any assistance in funding, and we'll know more info on that in the poll. As of right now, my school-based team, we're working on a sustainability plan that we have to submit to the school department. But with that being said, we're looking at the basis of the sustainability being brought through the operating budget. So, as we have done in the past at Fonseca, we have really worked to try to decrease the number of students overall in the school. As we started the turnaround, we had over 725 students, and the school was really kind of buckling at the seams. So, what we had done as a part of the strategy was having four classes enrolled in kindergarten in the first year of turnaround and have those four cohorts continue throughout. So, what that would look like for next year is that, right now, we have five third grades, five fourth grades, and five fifth grades. In kindergarten through second grade, we have 4K, 41, 42. Those four second grades are going to roll up into being those four third grades. What that would look like now with the teaching positions, and in addition to supporting Dr. Malone's strategy of trying to increase the programming for the four-year-olds, and it was also part of the initial turnaround plan, was to add on an additional pre-K full-day classroom. So, we would not lose a full-time employee position bumping that third-grade bubble class out. That position would be converted to a pre-K position, and we would also, at that point, need to have a pre-K paraprofessional hired to support that classroom. With the third grade conversion, although we're going from five classrooms to four, one of those four is going to be a foundational English language learner classroom. So, right now, in second grade, the model is three regular-ed classrooms that can have some English language learners that are higher language acquisition and some special education students, and then one classroom has students that have the low language acquisition skills that are considered to be newcomers or students that are levels one, levels two, with their language acquisition skills. And so, within those classrooms, that is, there's a teacher in there as well as a paraprofessional. So, now that we're rolling up this program from K-1, 2, to having a third-grade classroom this year, in order to follow that same format and support the work that the district wants to have those students with additional needs, to have the additional support, that classroom will also need a paraprofessional. So, there would be two paraprofessional positions that I would be looking at adding on this budget to help support some of that work that we needed to do.
Are they on it?
Yes.
So, they're already on it?
Yep, they're on my budget. So, then, nextly would be, I guess, I had requested to have a full-time school adjustment counselor that was bilingual as a part of the initial presentation to Dr. Malone and the school department team. And so, you know, I have a lot of data that would support that, where, and after meeting with Dr. Malone and hearing what his budget, what he's looking to present, I believe I will be able to receive some sort of a half-school adjustment counselor that will be able to service the bilingual students, especially those students that are in those foundational programs that really have a lot of high need. And so, looking at some of the students that we have referred to for mental health crises or to be screened, you know, we need to make sure that we have the capacity within our school building to be able to communicate with these students and their families before we would have to get anyone else involved regarding the students' mental health. Other than that, we are looking at an addition of a paraprofessional for the office. As we do have a high number of students at this school, we have been able to show great growth and gains with closing our chronic absenteeism, but it is still a challenge to try to get ahold of certain families every single day. I do have, and I'm lucky to have, two people that are able to call parents and families, especially those that may speak Spanish or Portuguese, but it's still a really time-consuming job to have to have someone take, you know, some of their responsibilities they have on a daily duty to put aside to really reach out, build the relationships with these families, communicate with the families, and then figure out what is it that's preventing the kids from getting to school. And so, we've done a lot of outreach work with some of the positions that we've had, but then the additional paperwork of mailing the letters and following through and keeping the scheduling, because parents will come in for attendance meetings. I know that the school department was looking at, you know, supporting schools with larger census of students with an additional support for that. Other than that, at this point, I don't believe that there's any other paraprofessional positions or anything that I was looking off of, anything. The extended learning time was there, I just wasn't sure about the four teacher-lead positions. Kevin, do you know if they were on that as well?
Yes.
No.
All right. So, during the turnaround, there were four teacher-leader positions that were stipend $4,000 each, and so, the teacher leaders or teachers in the building are able to apply for those positions on a yearly basis, and they're selected with input from the staff and the administrative team, and so, that would also be a part of the operating budget for next year.
Dr. Malone?
Everything that you talked, that you just mentioned, is there any, is there anything that we didn't fund that you had requested in the Fonseca?
Well, no. So, one of the things that initially I had put on here was the safety officer, but then the district said that they were going to maintain that regardless in a different line item and a different.
All right. And then, we were able at the end to put that bilingual SAC partner with Green, and we have that in too. So, we pretty much were able to do everything, and we maintained their extended learning time as well. So, everything that exists at Fonseca, this year with the FIG grant that ends, we carried forward and we fund now on the general budget, because remember, they're still in Level Four status, and the earliest they would be released would be probably October or November. So, we want to make sure that we're being smart and we funded everything that they, to sustain everything for this year. Next year, as you mentioned, they would have, this is part of the pre-K expansion, they would have an additional four-year-old classroom. When the next group of five, fourth and fifth graders exit, then we'd build another four-year-old classroom. So, we'd have four units from four-year-olds up through fifth grade, and it, there'd also probably be one class that we could bubble through, because there'd be one more space based on class size across the district. Feeling pretty good about Fonseca's budget.
Any questions for Fonseca?
I have a question.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Lisi. So, that full-time SAC, the bilingual SAC, did I just hear that correctly? It's going to be shared with Green, so it's a .5?
It's .5 in each building based on the numbers of kids that they have.
Right, so you're not getting a full-time, you're getting a part-time?
Halftime.
Halftime.
And you're, and Green's going to get a .5 FTE?
And that's really, so Green and Fonseca have those foundational classrooms, and that's really what we would see the support going towards those families the most.
It's on number 61 on the new positions.
And so, so they'll have 2.5 now, and you'll have 2.5 in terms of FTEs for SACs. I'm just looking district-wide. There are some schools that, obviously, probably based on their enrollment and their population, have two. Tansy looks like they have one, so I just want to make sure we're being equitable unless there's going to be a request from the administration to the committee to universally across the district add SACs, but I'm sure as schools present, we'll get more information on that.
Yep.
I'll just say this, and I'll make it as a general statement in terms of, and I know this has been Dr. Malone's focus, but I would just caution taking positions that are full-time equivalent positions off of grants and placing them in the operating budget. I know the grants have been reduced over time. I understand that becomes difficult for our district. However, I will say this, every time you take a body or a person off the grant, that now gets observed, their benefit package gets observed, absorbed, excuse me, through the city, who has to pay, obviously, the health insurance costs, goes towards, their obligation towards net school spending. So, I don't mind hearing the requests, but I can tell you that depending on how many we're trying to move off of grants, it's nice to do that when we have money. However, if there ever becomes a time where the state hits the skids and there's Chapter Nine, excuse me, 9C cuts, we need to be cognizant of that, because for us, it means the elimination of bodies if we get cut in funding. So, I just want to make sure while they're on grants, that's fine, because the grant has a section, obviously, where benefits, fringe benefits are picked up as part of that grant typically. So, I'm not saying in your particular case, I'm making it more as a general statement, and I'll make it, if I hear others across the board, but I just want to be clear that it's okay to do that, but I don't want to be wholesaling grants into operating budget because it turns into a financial issue. Obviously, the city will need to address in terms of their contribution towards the overall net school spending numbers. So, thank you, Ms. Lisi. With that, I yield Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah, so as far as the attendance figures are concerned, that all attendance, given you them, what's it looking like? What's the overall attendance, basically?
I mean, it's been really tough this year, because, I mean, we've had some awesome days. We were, you know, the highest.
Highest today.
Today, for sure. A lot of times, we'll see, the weather has a lot to do with it, and what we've been trying to do is, with the attendance, having, right now, we have the parent outreach worker that's trying to really kind of dig down deep and figure out why they're not coming in. And if it's weather-related, it's because the child lives too far to get a bus, or too close to get a bus. The parent has a newborn or a couple of young children, doesn't want to bring them out in the cold, and so then, we try to figure out, can they take the walking school bus? You know, is there a neighborhood friend that they could go with? So, not only are we just trying to figure out and make the phone calls, but really trying to break down what's preventing them from coming in, where are they living, and how can we try to, you know, be more proactive, whether it's, you know, looking at additional use of vehicles if needed, because we get kids from Harrah to Chite. So, if it's snowing or, you know, freezing cold and the kid misses the bus, that parent's not going to walk their child up to Fonseca from Harrah to Chite. So, you know, when we're looking at who's not showing up, we're trying to really narrow that work now.
Yeah.
And so, we have an attendance team that's able to do that, but again, those people that are on the attendance team have other obligations that sometimes are the priority versus the attendance. So, SACs are on those teams, but if a SAC has to, you know, evaluate or screen children, they're not going to be able to follow through with their phone calls.
In your estimation, do you think an additional outreach worker geared toward attendance improvement might help?
Well, I think that office paraprofessional position that Dr. Malone was looking at would definitely help, for sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Because then you can have more on-the-ground work, where we still feel in some instances, we're collecting so much data, but we don't have the solutions to how to help solve it. So, I think kind of bringing in an additional person and then using the parent outreach worker to go work amongst the communities to see if there's ways that, you know, after the bus is stopped running, that we get kids in.
Is there a language barrier with any of the attendant, the chronic attendants, students?
At this point, no. I have both my student support coordinator and the parent outreach board worker are Spanish-speaking, and I have my current paraprofessional who works in the office, she'll call and make all the Portuguese phone calls, and any letters that go home are able to translate as well into those two languages.
Great. Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Agia?
So, I've got a question on the student support coordinator. Is that going from, you said, a grant or to district?
That one was on the school redesign grant, and that one is one of the positions that's...
So, you might recall at prior meetings that one of my philosophies is that some schools have student support coordinators, some have an extra school adjustment counselor. I liken them to be very similar in their skill set and what they do in the school. Is there, do you have a difference of opinion on that?
I do. I think that the work that the SACs do versus what the student support coordinator does looks very different. The first year or two, it might have kind of overlaid a little bit more, just because it was an all-hands-on-deck, everyone's trying to figure out how to support the kids. But now, when you look at what the need is for our students regards to, like, the clinical stuff, in addition to a lot of the Tier One supports that the students need, that the behavior therapists work with versus the school adjustment counselors, and if we look at the number of student services on IEPs, that the SACs are the ones that own those minutes and hours. If they were to just do this, then this would be great, and we could get this proactive stuff and more small groups. Right now, what they were also doing is a lot of the data collection, the data analysis, the paperwork, the follow-through. And so, as we have kind of defined lanes and roles and responsibilities at Fonseca, her role is something that is completely different than what the SACs do, even including community outreach, parent support programs. She's been going to some trainings to think about how we can get parents to be more involved in education, not just learning what their kids are doing, but how to become better educated parents, how to, you know, learn, how to advocate for themselves and their child. So, the needs that the student support coordinator is providing to students and families is a very different avenue than what the actual school adjustment.
So, if you didn't have the student support coordinator, who would do that work? So, if you were at a school that didn't have that, those, all the things you just talked about are very needy. All schools have that same need. Who does that work in other schools?
So, I know that the district had hired some parent community workers, or there's another layer of parent worker that is more trained and qualified than what one would say I have as a community parent worker, where they are reaching out and doing a lot of that work. So, my student support coordinator will collaborate with some of those people, and one in particular, you know, she comes every Wednesday. Again, because our need for the Spanish-speaking community is so high, even having her body at our school making those calls once a week is tremendously helpful, and that's including having the student support coordinator and the two school adjustment counselors. So, it would be, I would need another person there. There would need to be something.
I support the services. I just think as a district, we don't have one of those at every school. I would much rather have an extra school adjustment counselor, and when we look at equality and hours and paying all that stuff, that's a whole other story. So, I'm not saying I'm not in favor of that person, but if you have two adjustment counselors and one of those, I look at it as you have three high-level mental health workers in your building, not just two. And so, I personally would want to see some changes along the way, this more district thing, so that we can have equality in what the positions are called. There's really not a negative on you at all. The other thing you talked about was making the position of the new bilingual outreach worker makes all daily attendance calls, and I think that's something that I've seen in a few of these proposals already. But is that a district position? As far as, is everyone going to do the same thing? Because I've asked at several meetings to see, what do we do when the students don't come in? What is our policy protocol across every school? And I think it's mixed. So, I see that, and I think there's a need for it. I'm just curious of who's doing it in the...
What, in other schools?
Well, in your school, somebody's doing it already. I think you just would rather have a focus.
So, the parent outreach worker, her focus is to make all of those attendance calls. That's her goal every day. She also goes to houses to meet the parents. If parents aren't answering the phone, she's going to make those home visits. She's also brought parents to appointments as needed to try to get paperwork complete, because if we're trying to get children services with counseling, and there's something wrong with their medical information, or they don't know how to fill out the paperwork because they can't read, our parent outreach worker has done some of that work. And if she's not within the building to make the phone calls, then the student support coordinator is trying to fill in for that piece. So, we're trying to not drop the ball in a lot of these high-priority areas, but the need within the Fonseca Elementary School for all of these different things, not just the services for the students, but really, we need to also educate the parents and support the parents, otherwise, it's woes me, like, and they can't always get the help, they don't know who to ask. And so, by having that parent outreach worker and the student support coordinator worker and having them build those ties with the community has been a huge and significant piece, like, the turnaround with the climate, the culture, the parent involvement, and even just our attendance getting better.
So, this was the position, another conversion, this was on the grant as well? I was, I apologize, I thought this was a new position, so you just converted, I mean, I definitely think there's a need for what you explained that position, but once again, I'd like to see that in all schools. I'd also like to see us, as I've said over and over, have a mental health psychiatrist on staff that we could, you know, use that as a resource, because that's definitely a problem, so that's a district issue. The only other question I had was, when you lowered the enrollment from one year to the, I don't think it was last year, but maybe a couple of years ago, how did that happen? Was it certain sections? Did your school get redistricted, or how did it work that they, which students are no longer there?
So, when we had done the enrollment for kindergarten for the 2016-17 school year, instead of enrolling for five kindergarten classes, it was four. So, there was 100 students that were able to enroll, and then, I think there was a high number of other students, close to 100, that needed to be dispersed into other schools, and I think at that point, Spencer Borden had taken on a kindergarten class.
But it wasn't by where the student lives, or was it your calling?
I mean, because we had the, I mean, they were all Fonseca students, so it was, it was pretty much, I think, prioritized based on first-come, first-served at that point, because they didn't know how it was going to play out, because initially, they spoke about redistricting, but I don't think it was a full decision, so I'm not sure how they selected at that point. The priority was to get any students that were in our preschool to be a priority to return to our kindergarten. And that's something that we're going to continue to do. You know, those pre-K kids are our Fonseca neighborhood kids, and so, those kiddos are going to stay at Fonseca for kindergarten, so they should have priority and then kind of fill in from there, also knowing that one of those four kindergarten classrooms is for that foundational newcomer English language learner strand.
And those might take kids from other places?
Some, but a lot of them are from Fonseca. We have a huge number of Spanish-speaking families, and it just continues to grow. I think, I had put here that the English student, like, ELM students went from 18.9% in 2016-17 to 27% 1920. So, that's, and that's the thing, we're adding on these foundational classrooms, but we were busing kids to other parts of the city, but they were Fonseca kids, so, you know, we needed to take on this type of program.
Yeah, those percentages went up from one year or three years.
So, that, the one I gave you there, the first one, was from the 16-17 school year. So, four years later, this being this school year, we're at 27%.
But you might have just taken 100 kids out, so the number might, the percentage might be higher, but the number might be very similar?
So, our demographic, well, our total enrollment was 726 for 16-17 and 673 for 1920. And even if you looked at the demographics of percentage of, like, Hispanic-Latino and Caucasian, like, that adjusted too, because we now have these English language learner strands, so...
Yeah, I think it's just a thought of, what are we, where are the kids coming from, and how do we make progress in the future? We're trying your best, we're trying to give you the resources, but if there's other things that we can do as a system to either help that or to have different boundaries, you know, like you talked about, one of the kids coming from Harrah to Chite, that's a hike. It's been like that for years. So, I don't think we have many options there. I don't have an easy answer for it, but it's certainly an issue. But I definitely support the positions. I would just like to see all of the schools, you know, be the same as best we can, so thank you for your presentation, I yield.
Tommy, then Paul.
Point of clarity, Ms. Lisi, the student support coordinator, is that just for your school, or is that a district-wide position?
So, at Fonseca, we have a student support coordinator. I believe the Green school has a student support coordinator. Doran was the one that originally, I believe, started when they did their turnaround.
So, they're all based at the schools?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you, Ms. Lisi. I just want to make sure I get it right here. So, you have right now two school adjustment counselors, right?
Correct.
And you said that your Hispanic population's grown, and you want to hire a bilingual SAC, correct?
Correct.
Are the other two that are there now bilingual SACs?
The student support coordinators bilingual, but the two school adjustment counselors, they've been working at Fonseca for several years before I had started, but neither of them are bilingual.
Okay, and so, if your population is growing with that, with the Hispanic community, why would you, wouldn't we want to hire a full-time SAC rather than have a part-time? I'm just thinking logistically.
We are, but they're split between two buildings.
They're splitting between two schools?
Yeah.
Okay, but the focus...
It's a bilingual SAC that's going to be housed half their time at Green, half their time at Fonseca.
Okay. And does that happen in the other, in the district as well?
Yeah, and this year, we also, we have another proposal this year that's a split between...
Leterno.
Leterno and Henry Lord, and also picking up the same population.
And it works out well?
Well, we have that in other places, yes, but this is, we have two proposals for two, you know, we got, I don't know how many SACs we have in the budget this year. how many SACs we have in the budget this year. We're requesting eight overall. But these two were split specifically around bilingual. And it works. Over time, people, you know, does it grow into being housed at one building? Most likely. But again, good's not the enemy. Great, we'll get there. We get the seven-year money.
All right, thank you. That's all.
Mark.
Sorry about that. So Orange, on the last sheet reflected your request for a para for fiscal year '20, correct? But then in Orange, you also have some Title I positions. Your redesign coach is a Title I position. You're asking to move a para from Title I into the operating budget. What are we gonna do with the redesign coach? I'm assuming the school's redesigned. You're at the end of your turnaround?
So we won't know until next year what the status is.
I made a commitment to keep it for one year.
So for sustainability, we were looking at keeping it for one year because what we need to do now is we need to develop a plan. It will be a little different than the turnaround plans that we submitted. But after speaking with the state, the redesign coach and I need to create a new plan using guidelines of what we've done in previous plans. But really, even without knowing what our accountability level would be, prove to them that, you know, the school department and the school committee is behind what we said we were gonna do to turn the school around, what's working. And this is what we're gonna do and get funded for. But then if we don't get out of the 10th percentile, we still need to apply for grant funding, which other schools have done through the TAG grants. And then we would need to be able to manage that money. And so the redesign coach, in addition to kind of what they do with many different things and have done with the redesign plan itself, even though we're saying we're out of the end of turnaround, it's the end of the turnaround funding. But since Fonsica had entered turnaround, their qualifications of what turnaround looks like and how you enter and exit has changed.
Right, so if your school goes from being level four to level two and there's no need to continue with your turnaround plans because you've been successful with that work, is there still a plan that's required because of your coming out of accountability?
Yeah.
So more for sustainability? So you're gonna have to put something together? Okay, I have enough information. Ariel, thank you.
I, I got one question, Alicia. How do you envision that half-time person working?
So right now, we have a couple of different structures at the school where I meet with staff at certain points. So there's once a week for about 45-minute block where I meet with the school adjustment counselors as well as the student support coordinator. And so when we meet, that would be an opportunity to meet. And we would talk, we talk about the high-need students.
No, I mean, how do you see them working half-day with you and half-day at Green?
Or, oh, no, no, no. I would hope that it would be maybe like two full days, two full days.
Two, three, two, three.
Yeah, and it would be based on the need of the students.
Okay.
Do you know what I'm saying? So.
You'd schedule your appointments and you'd work with the principal at Green to make sure that, because you don't want the person driving around the city half the day.
No, and I think some of the structures that we have put in place at Fonsica where we have those meetings and determine which students need which support, who's gonna follow up, what's that gonna look like from that meeting, even if that person isn't there full-time, if they're at that meeting, they know what their agenda's gonna look like moving forward.
Okay, thanks, Alicia. Hi, Josh.
Me, on the same line with the adjustment counselor. I mean, I think moving forward, we're gonna really want that to be a full-time position at some point. I mean, with the increase in the ELM students there, to not have the adjustment counselor in the building, someone's gonna have to call that adjustment counselor, right? If a student who requires an adjustment counselor has a crisis, that adjustment counselor's gonna have to be there for that student. So, I mean, I think in the future, we should probably start looking at hiring more bilingual adjustment counselors and making these positions full-time for, because I can see there being an issue with that. Adjustment counselor, thankfully, the student support coordinator can kind of fill in a little bit and help translate with us. All right, so I'm looking at the budget. I see, is it how many new positions here?
Hundred and six.
Six new positions?
Hundred and six.
I'm talking about Fonsica.
Oh. New positions is, I don't think there's many new positions. It's just covering what's on the grant.
Taking a grant, point of interest.
The grant's gone, so I just want to be clear about that.
Right.
School redesigns, right?
The only positions that I'm looking for would be three.
Right, and then the bilingual adjustment counselor. Okay, and being a level four school, we feel good about that, only adding a few new positions.
I feel good, I feel good right now with where they are to sustain for this year. But this is the year we're really gonna get a snapshot from the state as to what actually is going well and what needs improvement. I want to, I know in the old model, we used to talk about schools exiting and then they were fixed. I don't think under the new accountability system, we're ever gonna be able to fix things. We're always gonna need special forces level intervention in certain schools. Fonsica being one of them. The demographics alone show that. I mean, we're also struggling with this right now with Watson. Watson's in year six of turnaround. So what I would propose is, you know, to come back to the committee next year when we got a nice data set and be able to say, this is what we want to do for the following year. But we don't even know what the state's gonna do with the, with the school yet. We don't know if they're gonna stay in status. Because remember now, it's no longer level four, level three, level two, level one. It's bottom 10% of the state and then everyone else. And then, you know, real intensive intervention with the bottom 3%.
Mimi?
Just quickly, Alicia, did you say that both your student support coordinator and the parent outreach worker are bilingual? So both of them? And then this part-time SAC with Green is also gonna be the bilingual part?
And I mean, I've been fortunate where I've been able to proactively hire bilingual staff elsewhere and someone that works in my main office speaks Portuguese. But it's constant. Like, if we don't have people readily available, they're constantly walking for people to either come to the office or take phone calls for translation.
Yeah, and I also see that you are the only school with a parent outreach worker, correct?
Yeah, Doran used to have, and I don't know if they still do. That's kind of where the idea came from when I was doing the turnaround.
Do you still have it? No. All right, so we put that in with the turnaround grant. In this budget, we sustained that, and I believe we've added two more for the district. The goal is with the Student Opportunity Act money, every year to add more. I want to get to a place where we have these outreach workers at every single elementary and middle school and likely at the high school at some point.
Which, with their main focus attendance, is that?
Well, it's attendance and engagement. Now, we did put in this budget, and you can see on the page that we have where it says SOA investment, all buildings that have more than 650, I think of 650 kids, we added the additional office para. And that person's gonna be specifically doing calls and follow-up authorities in all of those buildings to support what's currently happening. Learned that, I don't know who was with me the day we were out at, Sylvia. I don't know which one of you guys was with me. Yeah, I think it was you, Mimi, when we were talking to Ms. Long about how much work in a building that size goes on in the morning in the main office. So we added those, and again, maybe next year, I can come back and we can look at that level of support in different buildings as well. But I did, you know, I did the best I could to get to the figure. Mr. Aguirre is right. We want to get to a place where we have outreach workers everywhere. But this year's strategy was just get a couple in, and then we'll get a couple more in the following year, and a couple more, thinking that each year this budget's gonna go up by 14%. That's what the law requires in funding. So we'll see.
Kev?
So I just had a question on the behavior therapist. So in the district, we have a position called behavior therapist. What is the qualifications to be that position, to get that position?
I know that it's a bachelor's level.
It is a bachelor's level. One of the qualifications is a social worker's degree or a, in my public job description, a social worker or a SAC licensure or eligibility for a SAC licensure. So we're currently in the process of looking at a program to change that with a different licensure program where they can get licensed. But I was supposed to license, creating that situation. Where what we're doing is we're driving our own turnaround. We'd have to work with people who are not yet used to certification levels. We'll bring them in, and as soon as they complete the certifications, they can go for a SAC job or a social worker's job. So what I'm working with is a low sharing out, we'll be in a couple of different licensure programs to bring them in as either an RTI or other interventions.
Yeah, so the reason why I ask that is because now we're adding BCBA's in the budget. Not in your school, but I don't think anyway, but that's a totally different position. And when I was talking before about the student support coordinator position, I just look at it as more mental health workers, like those, they're all doing very, not the same thing. But when I look at a budget, I look at it 75 grand, basically 80 grand for a SAC, 75, 80 grand for a behavior therapist, 75, 80 grand for this. So when I look at it and add that up, I look at it as that's the amount of money that we're getting, you know, the services for what we have. And then through the zero-based budgeting process, principals or administrators, whoever's involved, can choose to say, you know, I'd rather have a BCBA, or I'd rather have a SAC, or I'd rather have another person. And just looking at this stuff, I don't necessarily see those debates. That's for every principal as well. But the qualifications of being a school adjustment counselor or licensed, I'm not sure that all the behavior therapists are exactly as Mr. Pupin just mentioned. So I'd like to get some sort of report from the administration related to, do we go with BCBA's if that's the going trend and do it? Or do we transfer some of those positions to actual SAC positions in truth and advertising, call the person like they are? And then a principal can say, this SAC is gonna specialty is in behavior, this SAC specialty is in something else, you know? Just trying to get it across the whole thing. Because I look in the budget, each line item, we're talking 75 grand, 78 grand for a behavior therapist with a bachelor's degree requirement. And then is that the best use of the $75,000 position is just what I'm throwing out there?
Yeah, the BCBA's, the BCBA's, we're moving towards more, but they're very specialized with special ed programs. You'll see us rule more BCBA's out. In this budget, I think we have, I don't know, two or three. And then we got the cluster coordinators as well to help with the very intensive sped work. Go ahead.
The BCBA's, we're gonna be more focused on the ASD programs and those types of classes. Whereas the behavior therapists are actually in the teacher's unit, they come in a little bit lower than what we were talking about.
Right, so if I ask anybody to tell me, what is the, what is the skill set? Not any specific individual, but the overall skill set of a person who's a licensed school adjustment counselor or a behavior therapist? Are they comparable?
Well, they're comparable on paper, but in reality, what we're using is we're using the behavior therapist more as an interventionist for strictly those behavioral type issues where the SACs do a little bit wider spread of skills.
So if the question was, does the skill set of a SAC or the skill set of a behavior therapist? When we look in at zero-based budgeting, what I've always learned about zero-based budgeting is you throw everything on the table and you say, here's a value judgment. Here's my 80 grand. Is it best used as a person who is a licensed medical health counselor, school adjustment counselor, or behavior therapist? That's all I'm proposing. I have my own personal opinion on it that the school adjustment counselor is more highly qualified than a typical behavior therapist under the way that we have it here. If that is, I just don't know that that debate's ever happened in a true zero-based budgeting type of format. That's all I'm suggesting. We're spending the $150,000, $160,000 for two adults in the building. Is it a behavior therapist or is it better off having two extra SACs? Like in your case, you could have four SACs instead of the two and a half, instead of the behavior therapist. I'm not, I'm not putting you out of the spot, but you get what I'm saying. Is that's, in my mind, that's what zero-based budgeting is, is to say, here's what we're, here's what our budget is, and can we get a better, more qualified person, larger candidate pool, whatever it is, for that kind of money? That's all I'm throwing out there. I don't look for an answer. But I think it's definitely something to think about. I have one question for the administration, though. We talked about the grants, moving off the grants. When do we decide, when, what do we spend that money on?
We'll come back to you in the summer with whatever it is we get from the state. We don't know what their grants will be yet.
But what are we operating on now, under, what premise are we operating now under for how much we're gonna get for grants?
Well, we don't know.
We're looking at the budget.
So we hope we get what we had the year before, but every year it's been reducing more and more. So we did an analysis, I don't know, a year ago, two years ago, that showed over the prior four years, I mean, a percentage of like 20% reduction in those grants. Problem is, we've had too many positions. I know why. But we've had too many positions on grants over the years because we had, because the operating dollars were so few. So we've used a tactic of trying to, each year, pull a couple, not a lot, but just a couple off of each of these grants so that when the grants come out, if there's any additional money, we can come back to the committee and say, we got $100,000. What can we do with it? Well, we, you know, we gotta do a better job with, I don't know, give me a thing. Fluency. I don't know how the hell you even teach it. Give me something.
ESL.
Whatever, ESL supports, right? And then we could use that money. That's the purpose of the original intent of what the grant dollars were supposed to be for, was to target.
My only question is, what are we using for a number for grants right now? Like, when we create this budget, how did we determine that we can only afford to do, like, move three of them over, and then how much is that free up on the grant per second?
So.
So we have, we have inclusive preschool grant has gone, is going away. So it's a grant that we had three, over three years, it's sunsetted. That's one grant. So that's a position and a half of FTEs. We have the SRG grant that went away. It's going away in next year's budget. I'm anticipating that Title I's gonna see a pretty substantial decrease because Title I, the poverty numbers that have been posted have significantly reduced from this past year. And it's really caused by the new low-income metric at the state. So we're gonna see a reduction. I just don't know what it equates to in dollars because they, it's not a exact formula on how to calculate it. So I know that we're gonna, we're gonna lose dollars in the grants. So our strategy has been to take some positions off of grants into the operating budget so that, you know, we're not, we're not in the situation in July or August where we're trying to, we have to cut positions because we don't have the grant.
I understand what you're saying. If I may ask that, if we can get a report just to the committee relative to the budget process to say, here's what we have right now, if nothing changes, here's the positions that we have in all the grants. So that we can just get an idea of where are we at? And when we pass this budget, it's assuming there's Title I in the back and all this other stuff.
Correct.
And then if you were asking me to tell you how many positions did we move, I have no idea. So if we could get that number, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
You know, the only other, the only other question I had from the district is, and it might be in the budget, correct me if I'm wrong, but do we have somewhere that compares 18, 19 to 19, 20 across the schools? And if not, can we just get something that, when the dust settles?
In what, in what regard, I guess is my question.
So for instance, in Fonsica, they had all this money from SRG grants. They had this and that, came up with a number for their entire budget. Title I, all the number?
We don't, we don't have it in that, in that format.
Could we get that to the budget process at some point? I think it's something to look at across all the schools.
I give you something.
Yeah, I'm not looking for it today, but whatever. But then I go.
Thanks, Kev.
I just want to make sure he doesn't get everything. Work up light, you know?
All right, is that it, guys? Let's, let's, let's hit the next one. You're up, Green.
Hi, I'm Kim Luca. I am the new principal at Green Elementary. This is my first year in Fall River. And I have to say, I'm absolutely honored to be a principal here, so thank you. I walk into a building that provides itself with a tremendous climate and culture. Unfortunately, we've been identified this year as low performing. We are one of the larger elementary schools with about 730 kids, about 19% are Ls, about 20% are special ed students. We do not have a lot of data to go by other than the MCAS at this point are in the process of Anet testing. And you can't see the improvements with screening one to screening two. But I can definitely tell you that half of our kids in ELA and especially math are below proficient. With that being said, I am not necessarily asking for a ton of positions because we're not quite sure yet exactly what caused that dip. It could have been, you know, a myriad of things with the change in administration. So we're just trying to take it a little bit slow. So to get right into the budget, I can tell you that four of those positions that you see, 12, what is it, 14, 50, and 21, those are just open due to some fine teachers retiring at the end of the year. So that's not anything necessarily new. We are requesting one of the attendance pairs in the main office due to the size of the school and the fact that we did notice a flux in attendance. school and the fact that we did notice a flux in attendance, although our attendance has been a little bit better this year, it's very difficult to keep up with the students that are being, you know, that are absent. And for me, I started out the year being reactive to the information that I was getting about the school being the new kid on the block and just, you know, walking into a situation, but I want to take a proactive approach for next year, and that being one of them, is to stabilize and be proactive about attendance, and right off the bat, try to make as many attendance calls during the day to find out why the kids are absent, instead of looking at a kid's attendance and saying, oh, they've been absent fifteen days, so let's, let's now make a telephone call, let's now send a letter, or, you know, pay a visit. We want to be proactive, so I think it's really important to have that extra person in the office to help with attendance. Plus, we have a huge school with an incredibly busy office. It'd be good to have the attendance piece how is going to smaller area. I do have student support counselor, coordinator, excuse me, and I wanted to convert that to a student adjustment counselor. And it may be for different reasons than Fonseca, because, you know, it was mentioned, what is the different skill set? There is a different licensure for that, number one. And in my particular case, the skill set particular person that I have right now, I think would be, it would be better suited for us to have a SAC, so that we can address the social emotional needs of the students and the more clinical pieces, and again, take that proactive approach. He is, right now, a fine gentleman, but it's more of a reactive approach, dealing with behavioral stuff that's happening, and not necessarily being able to meet with the kids and deal with crisis and do a lot of parent and community outreach and SEL outreach like a SAC is able to do and skilled to do. So for us, it's not necessarily new, it's just a conversion to provide unique needs in our school. We also want to eliminate our math interventionist coach, based on the fact that we scored incredibly low on MCAS for math, and we're looking at needing someone to look at data and work in between the administration, support the teachers, and help us start to write a turnaround plan. And for us, with the size of the school and our turnaround status, it would be better for us to get a math department head. And we would also like a new position for a para. We're incredibly tight with the paras in the building right now, and there are kids that have, you know, unique and specific needs that might just bubble up during the day, whether it be a social emotional need, or whether it be some academic intervention, and to have that extra person who is trained enough to be able to take a small group of kids and help them with an intervention, or help them with a little issue would be very beneficial to us, instead of it being incredibly tight, of course. And that's it.
Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Luca, I appreciate the work you're doing at the school, and I can't remember, someone mentioned your school to me in a conversation I was having, and I can't remember the context, but it was a good one.
Thank you.
I don't know specifically what it was, but I remember leaving that conversation feeling like things are going well there. I can't remember, it was someone who had visited your school for some reason and said that they thought things were going really well there, so congratulations on that.
I appreciate it.
So if, if your proposal goes through, your current student support coordinator will be eliminated? Is that individual going to stay?
Convert it to a SAC.
But doesn't have the skill set to be a SAC?
No, or the licensure. I think the, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I think a student support coordinator is a guidance counselor license.
Okay. Now, Tom's going to correct you.
Is the SAC licensed and is also a social worker licensed, you're going to be the one for the SAC?
Okay.
So that.
For the support coordinator as well.
So that individual.
The experience.
The experience.
So that individual will no longer work for the district?
We don't know. We don't know.
Why not?
Because we'll follow the contractual bargaining process.
But we had a need for that position at one point, and so is it a contract position? It's a person on a contract?
No, they're part of the FRE. Is it FRE that position? Yeah.
FRE.
So it's a position that follow the collective bargaining process around bumping or whatever, if there is those rights, if there's not, then the person's open to apply for other jobs.
Okay. The other thing that I, was the math department head. So I've been around for a bit, and maybe this is more directed towards the administration than it would be to you as the principal, but can someone finally decide whether or not we want department heads, or do we want interventionists and coaches? Because I've been here where, and if I went back and looked, schools have said, we need an interventionist, we need a coach for math, and we need a coach for English, for ELA. And then, two years later, we want to convert that to a department head. And then, so we've gone from department heads to coaches and interventionists, to department heads, can someone just decide in this district, do we want math department heads, ELA department heads, or do we want coaches and interventionists? So.
It's a tough question to ask, because it's really about size of building in many ways. Because remember, the interventionist coaches, coach, do student interventions, but department heads evaluate.
Right, but when I hear the need or the rationale or the basis for, in this particular case, an intervention slash coach, there's a reason for that. The building didn't change, the population is still the same in that school, give or take a few students. So the demographics haven't changed such as, as your example would lead me to say, okay, right, they're going to inflect the students, but it just, it just gives me a little bit of hot burn, because we go from department heads, and we go back, we sort of vacillate back and forth. Can someone just evaluate both positions and say, okay, it makes sense in our district to have this model, rather than having this model for two years, and then we switch back to a department head, then we go back to an interventionist? Just seems like we keep going back and forth, converting positions.
And don't also forget the title dean as well.
Yeah. Department head dean, yeah.
Right, so.
Right, so, and if that's what you want, that's fine. Just say that.
Yeah, I'm not saying that's what we want. In this situation, what we're looking at, and if money wasn't an option, Mark, I would probably have department heads in all schools, but I don't have that luxury right now.
Right. But your principals who've been here for a bit, most will attest to the fact that at one point or another, they had interventionist or coach that they asked to convert to department heads, and then maybe even in their tenure have gone back to an intervention or a coach after department heads, and Mr. Almeida's shaking his head, and I've been around, I remember my fifteenth year, so I've seen it happen. I'm just saying, I'm okay with it, but can we just get consistent with what the model's going to be? Like.
Yeah.
And whatever best suits the district, I'm in support of it.
It's just not going to happen overnight. I mean, what you're asking is, let's take a real look at this and think about this in the long term of the SOA, how do we do it?
Today, I think if you want a conversion, you feel it suits your school, that's fine, but I also, Ms. Luca, I hope you're here for the next several years, come back to us in another budget cycle, say you now go on a department head, you now need an interventionist for math.
And we had lengthy discussion about this in our, in our zero-based meeting. Tell us, tell the committee what your rationale on this.
So what ends up happening is that a department head for us is more of an administrative position, and they can really look and work with the administration, the data, working with the teachers to find out, because they're really great in that particular contact and content, and working with the teachers to find out where they're struggling. They can lead the data meetings, they can lead the redesign piece in math where we're incredibly struggling. Right now, the coach interventionist, that's a teacher status, there's no extra time, there's, they're part of the union. Sometimes it's difficult with teacher to teacher, trying, a teacher trying to lead a teacher and get into their classroom. So for us, to have that higher level math support, it would be really beneficial, especially being labeled now as a turnaround school. So we would need help both, like it kind of serves two purposes, help on the administrative end of it, not necessarily just for evaluation, but that's helpful, more with the data piece and the redesign.
So now, without the coach or interventionist, your department head's going to go in and provide that intervention to those students in the classroom?
They can definitely provide support.
They can, will they?
The actual.
So if they now are going to take on, so if you have students who are struggling in the classroom, is that department head now going to go into the classroom and present materials, assist, tutor, et cetera, et cetera? Or are they going to take on the role as administrator and basically evaluate and assess the data?
So this person is labeled as a coach interventionist, but they're actually a coach, so they're not necessarily servicing the kids, they're servicing the teachers to make them better teachers for the kids. We have not that interventionist that goes in to help the kids.
So yours is a coach, not an interventionist? So they're assisting the teachers, not the students?
Yes.
Okay, so that's clear now. Is your, so at some point, someone thought you needed a coach to coach the teachers in their curriculum, review the data. Are you saying that that's no longer needed, but it's more of a higher level administrative position that's needed?
No, I'm saying this person can be both.
This person can be a department head and/or a coach?
They can go in to support, absolutely support the teachers, help them analyze their data, help them see where the gaps are.
The coach you have now?
No.
The department head?
Yes.
Okay, now I follow you, because I'm like, well then, why do we need a department head if they can go in and do those things? I see what you're saying. So more the administrative stuff, want to look at the data, be able to go in and actually, because they're a department head as opposed to a peer, same union, they'll be able to deal with any issues that come up in the classroom with a particular staff?
And they have a specialization in math, whereas.
In math.
A math coach may just be an elementary school teacher.
In terms of the coaches then, I think it speaks back to my point. Maybe we should look at the coaches and decide whether or not they should be department heads, because it sounds like it's not unique to you. Those are all, all the coaches are going to fall into that same situation. So if we have schools where we have either an ELA coach or a math coach, then maybe there's a proposal going forward at some point to change those to department heads, and just eliminate the position of coach. Interventions, I see differently. Because those people are working with students.
Right.
They're more hands-on, I understand the need for those, but coaches?
Yeah.
If you need someone with a higher level ability or administrative role for evaluation, whatever it is, then it sounds like the department head position is the more appropriate one, not the coach. In my, in my view.
Ayew, thank you. Tommy?
If I could echo the vice chairman's comments, I would agree. But before I do, I want to say, I was really pleased to hear you say that you're honored to be working in the Fall River District now, coming here, and that means a lot to us, because obviously, we're trying really, really hard to pull things together. We're centric on the needs of the school district, and to have somebody that's honored to be here, well, that's a plus. I'm a former Green staffer, and a former SAC there, and I have an emotional tie-in to that school. I know what you mean about the positive culture in that school. It has existed for a long, long time. There's a core faculty there that has been there for quite a while, that really helps to carry the culture forward, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing to try to sustain that culture within that school. Some of the feedback I've gotten, not just from that school, but from throughout the district, to echo the vice chairman's comments, are the viability of math coaches and interventionists. So it's been on my mind as well, happy to hear you discuss it at this level. Twelve years ago, when NISL was, was all the rage, and everybody was getting trained up, and every form was like, you know, all the standards were hitting this hard, that sort of tier came in, and it was, it was in style. But I'm glad to hear you report out tonight that really, I think we might need something even more, a math specialist, because now this, this elementary math, I can't even figure it out anymore, I'm not even afraid to say that, but that's how much the math standards have grown in a period of time in our schools. So given that the math standards have grown so intensely, it's great to know that, that we want to try to focus, and I would be in complete agreement with you, as far as department head designation versus coach interventionist. I like, I like the direction where that's going. As far as the SACs are concerned, you're asking for a plus one SAC. I'm always in favor of SAC, and to this committee's credit, we've been really focused on growing that tier as well. In two years, my two years on the board, we've seen an additional six SACs come into the district, so I'm very pleased about that, because I think their work is just so important. Social skills groups, are there any social skills groups going on within your school, whether it be para ed or SAC ed or anything like that?
We're hoping to actually get an extra para to start some social.
I heard you say that, yeah.
That's really important, you know, they're so valuable to the young people, so that's important to us. I would say that the SACs are trying to pull groups of kids in daily to work on those types of things.
They're identifying the cases that would fit into the social skills grouping.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Keep your eyes on that, and try to keep growing that. We're trying to grow the ethic of social skill groups throughout the district as much as possible. I know it's tough, within the minutes of a school day, and time on learning, and all the other demands, but if you can fit it in, I just think it helps the culture of the school overall. And the other thing I'm going to ask you is, is about overall attendance. I really like the attendance offices at work at that school. I sit on the attendance task force, and so now, I never realized what went into, you know, our district's attendance, until I sat on this task force over the past two years and learned so much. And the mapping for the demographics in our city is pretty intense, and there's a lot of reasons that play into chronic school absenteeism, but we know that chronic absenteeism feeds right into lack of attainment and achievement. So what's the attendance just looking like overall? I'm just looking for, you know.
It's fluctuating between ninety-one, ninety-three, sometimes on high, ninety-five. You'll see a dip during the holiday season, kids going on vacations for a month at a time.
Yeah.
The flu knocked us out a little bit, weather plays a huge part, but, you know, you have the chronic and the excessive kids that from the Indian era still have those issues, and that's when you send the letters out, the home visits. But we want to grab those kids that we can start to see, like in the first month of school, they've already been absent two, three times, and be able to call the parents, say, what can we do to support you? Like have that time to reach out and say, acknowledge the fact your child is not, what can we do to support you? Attendance is incredibly important. And without, like, extra bodies to be able to make those calls every day, it's virtually impossible to get to every single one of them, and again, you want to be reactive instead of proactive.
Yeah.
So that's why we're.
Are there any cultural barriers or issues surrounding the outreach factor?
Sometimes.
Do you need some, do you need maybe something extra, maybe somebody who's bilingual or?
Very helpful.
That would be helpful, right? Thank you. With that, Ayew.
Kev?
So I'd like to make one request of the administration now. This sheet here, if we can add the interventionist and coaches to that, because I'm looking at the totals of, after the budget's done, it says green at ten point five. In essence, you know, based on the conversation we just had, there's three or four interventionist coaches that are not listed, that's why it looks really low, with seven hundred and twenty-five students, or whatever the number is. So if we could just add that to it, it will help us.
I just, is everyone happy with the new updates from today? They did this today and added everything, so you can see what we proposed added in, so you got basically the current, and then what the proposed operating budget offered. So we can definitely add that, but I figured you'd like this one, Kevin.
Thank you. The other piece on the Title I, when somebody asked the question, why are we doing coaches and interventionists? It's my belief that the reason why was when the money was tight, we used to cover the professional development, a coach could be considered professional development for minimum, in Title I, if I recall. That's how we started to get happy with like a coach, 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 it's because we could take grant money, count it towards professional development, that's where we got, in my opinion. So as we move from there, you're talking about taking them off of Title I, assuming that that's sufficient for a department head, we're not going to, we're not going to lose that funding, because I think we're way over in Title I for that issue. Relative to the need for the math department head, I agree with you wholeheartedly. The issue is, the math department head, I think you said it, can actually do the intervention, whereas the interventions can't do the stuff that needs to get done in an administrative team for a department head. So I, I would agree, I think it's needed. You only have three, it looks like only three people to evaluate. You only have three, it looks like only three people to evaluate seven, you know, however many staff you have for that, which is sort of outrageous.
It's tough.
We need to, so we need to increase that. The only suggestion I would make, and I've made this suggestion in the past, and I should have changed the job description, but I recall when people had department heads, they couldn't find a candidate because of the type of requirements that we put in our own. So we sort of killed ourselves with it because we put the standards, I think you needed to have advanced degree in math per se. So you could have somebody that's great and would be awesome in the job, but I would caution to open it up so you might get candidates for it. Because I've been on this board before and watched where math department head jobs just go unfilled. So whatever we're going to do to change that requirement so we can actually get people, quite frankly, even an assistant principal, I saw you had a request to move a vice principal over or something like that. But even an assistant principal with the skills of do the work that you need, it might make more sense to somebody to have that kind of license instead of the other license. I just know it's been an issue in the past. And my last comment is on the social and emotional learning powers. I think a couple of schools have that. That's just a power, right? There's a, there's not a.
It's just a power, but we specify that they're not one-to-one, they're not, they're working specifically on student crisis needs.
Yep. I would recommend that you take a peek at the, in whatever we called it instructional, the one with the minimum of a bachelor's degree, because you might get more qualified people that might have the skill set you're looking for to do this work rather than the other way. And they do get paid a little more, but you're also getting somebody with a higher skill set. So that would be my suggestion and go for the work. Thank you, Ayew.
Thank you. Anybody give me, oh, Josh, sorry.
That's kind of a silly question I had, talking about Fonz. So we're only adding two new positions here. And I appreciate you saying, we don't really know what we need yet, you know, we're trying to figure it out. And that's all we're adding. It's huge influx of money and we're only adding two positions. Is there anything else we feel, I mean, in terms of the principal?
They're part of, I mean, all the other investments in the budget. All the money in technology, all the money in curriculum material supplies, all those things. We got also TBD positions. We don't know where they'll go yet, which may happen here. She's a big part of the conversion to full day for four-year-olds in her building, professional development money. So they're getting a bunch more. I mean, it's funny, when you look at, you know, a hundred and six positions and you actually look at, you know, every building only, still only getting a couple of things. It doesn't feel like as much as we expected with this year's Student Opportunity Act, but we did the best we could.
Right. My question, you referenced the hundred and six positions. How many of those positions are new to the district and how many would love a grant?
Those are a hundred and six are new.
Oh, a hundred and six are new.
Yeah.
And then there's a number of positions.
Yeah, there's about eight we moved off grants this year on top of that.
Is there anything else this time?
The good news is they're all direct service.
Anyone? Speak up now, I guess is the time. There's something you think you need. Thank you very much, Ayew.
Tom?
Dr. Malone, so what's the direction of pre-K, Green specifically? I know that there's already a big component there for the pre-K and K.
So the goal at Green is that we have, right now, half-day programs for four-year-olds. We convert those, I think it's three rooms. We convert those into four-year-old programs. We're going to build another room up off the library we can create, and that will capture another room that I can use for four-year-olds as well. The three-year-olds will stay in half-year program. I think she only has two of those classrooms.
Yeah.
And those will stay as half-day. So those, but the, the goal is that we get to four units of four-year-olds there.
Yeah.
Within two years.
Yeah. That, that's a great environment because they already have the environment for it now. So it's already there, so that's great. Thank you, Ayew.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Real from Laterno.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I'm just going to give you some numbers here. We have increased, as have the other schools, in terms of our ELL population. We're up to about forty-five percent. So we do see quite, quite a few new students this year. Our students with disabilities, thirteen percent, and our high-needs students are eighty-one percent. So we are certainly a school that has great needs, but we are also a school that has the most outstanding staff that I have ever had the honor to work with. And my goal in creating this budget is to help them to be able to do their job. The positions that I requested were intended to support the good work that's already going on. We have, and we're very fortunate to be able to have been approved to have team leads, and we have team leads in grades K, one, two, special ed, and science. And they work very closely with those content-level teachers weekly. They're in the classrooms, they're meeting with them during PLCs. We wanted to add to that an ESL lead. This would be somebody that would meet with classroom teachers at least once a week to provide additional support. And they would also be the ones in charge of professional development surrounding ESL needs for staff. We also had the privilege of having an instructional liaison position this year where we were able to hire a Providence College grad who was not sure until her last semester that she wanted to become a teacher. And it's just been an absolutely wonderful opportunity to see her grow. She wants to go into teaching. We're going to give her the first job that opens up next year. And it really supports this position and how valuable it has been. So I'm requesting another so that we can fill the position that we're thinking we will be giving her as she goes into a teaching position and have another that we can also grow a new teacher in that role. We had asked for a behavior specialist and we are getting another SAC. And that SAC will be used to support the work of our two current SACs. One SAC is the science to grades K two, the other works at grade three, five. And what this, I can envision this other SAC doing is really support teachers to be able to help their students in the classroom so that there's less pullout. So it's looking at creating a proactive culture. We are very involved in SEL. We've embedded SEL into the framework of our content areas. And that work is done not only in our weekly SEL PLC meetings, but also with our dean of instruction, so that we're looking at curriculum and how to embed that work. Our students come to us with a multitude of issues. Not only can they not speak the language, but there are not opportunities from one day to the next to really acclimate themselves to a new culture. And that plays out in a multitude of ways. So we want to be able to, to continue this work in the area of SEL. We see that as proactive.
I agree.
Is that it?
Yes.
Any questions? Let someone else start first. Go ahead. If you're going to go first, go ahead. Go ahead, Mark, it's only you.
Oh, it's me. And I'll be real brief. Great catch with that individual. If she's willing, able, and has the credentials, Mr. Superintendent, I'm only speaking for myself. When you find someone like that, they don't, they don't come along often. So if you are asking for a new position in order to bring this person on as part of your team on a more permanent basis?
Correct.
I can tell you that I'm making a note in my, my booklet here. I certainly will be supporting that. Like they're tough to come by. If you get somebody who's committed, wasn't sure, and now is sure, I would say give that person an opportunity. It sounds like they'll be a great fit for your team. And now you're asking for, in addition to that, is another, so you asked for two positions?
We have two.
One, to bring this person on, and then you're looking to, potentially, if you have a vac, you're looking, you're going to have a vacancy or asking for additional position?
We're asking for an additional position.
Okay.
The role that this person had was to sort of team teach with the technology teacher. Because of, we were able to turn that position into a steam position.
Okay.
So the technology position really transformed into something that is also valuable, all because of this liaison position. So we're thinking that we could grow even more support for the ESL program by putting this intervention para in with teachers to help support the ESL needs.
You typically, typically at the, at this level, we wouldn't be making or taking votes. If they, if we were, if we were, I would certainly make the motion today to make sure that that position doesn't go.
Thank you.
Anywhere and that it stays in your school. Mr. Superintendent, I.
Yeah.
I know you've been listening. So I'm going to ask that that position stay there. I know it's only one person, but if it comes before us for a vote, I can certainly tell you I would support that because improvement has been an issue, not just for your school, but for the entire district. And so my feeling is if you sort of, if they're homegrown, if they're part of the team and the culture already, and they're willing, and we just need to find a place for that person, given the fact that the Student Opportunity Act money's come in, we get additional hundred and six positions, I would ask that, that your request be honored. I think it's reasonable and I think it makes a lot of sense for you.
Thank you.
With that, Ayew.
Tom?
Yeah, I want to, I want to praise the attendance figures. Really trying to hit up attendance now. I want the entire district thinking, what can we do to turn around the overall attendance everywhere? And at your school, we have the walking school bus. And earlier, earlier this year, Dr. Malone and Mayor Krugan and I attended a ceremony honoring Vice Principal Dave Bassett for his work on the walking school bus, and very deservedly so. He won some awards from the community at large because that kind of stuff works. I know that that's sort of like a voluntary action on behalf of the Laterno School itself. I wish other schools had people that would step up to that plate and create walking school buses. I know that, that it's not easy to do, but, but it just speaks to the specialness of the vice principal and what he has undertaken for the last several years. And I see that your numbers are looking like ninety-four and you want to increase it to ninety-eight. Those numbers look really, really good. And so that's the kind of proactive take we need to attack a problem like that. I wish, I don't know if the district ever has anybody that could do a para, that could do something like that for a school, to go out and round up kids, do a mile radius or a two-mile radius walk within the school and, and try to like round up kids at their homes and bring them into school on a daily basis. And he does it no matter what the weather's like, in all kinds of weather, he still does it. There's never a day that's missed. So attendance, chronic absenteeism is a major issue and the state hits us hard every year. And so this is a real proactive way to do it. Continue to develop that SEL culture at the school. It's incredibly important. Support the culture and give the teachers all the support they need so they can move their curriculum forward. And, you know, by all means, I know that Vice Principal aside, may be retiring in the not-too-distant future. If you guys could recruit somebody to take his place, that would be like really awesome. With that, Ayew.
No one will ever take Dave's place. Every school in this district should have a Dave's hot. And it brings tears to my eyes just to hear that he's thinking of leaving. But I agree with you. I mean, the fact that he goes out rain or shine to get those kids speaks volumes to the importance of being at school.
Yes.
And how big his heart is to do that rain or shine. So it's a wonderful.
And there's great results as a result of that.
Exactly.
I mean, your numbers show it. So that's great. Thank you, Ayew.
Anybody have anything? Kev?
So we're talking about attendance. Who was the attendance officer at your school?
Amanda. We have a new person this year. Her name is Amanda.
Who was it last year?
It was, because remember, we had, it was split because we had run less.
It was Lisa.
I'm just curious.
It was Lisa.
We're giving kudos to attendance going up. We should make sure we count the attendance officer, I think. The question I had was on the behavior therapist that's on, it looks like it's here on your request for new personnel, but it doesn't appear that it's on this, this sheet. And then it doesn't show up on the non-funded. Is it funded or not?
I believe the recommendation was made to go with a SAC rather than behavior therapist.
It's a good recommendation.
Yeah.
Or you're not getting that either?
I'm sorry.
Getting a half, halftime SAC.
I'm only looking at what was given to us. It shows four new positions, ESL lead, the two instructional liaisons, and a behavior therapist. But you're saying this changed since then?
Correct. You're the halftime SAC.
We gave you the actual request from each school so you get to see the winnowing, the winnowing process. So not everyone gets what they want. So when we brought forward something, we thought, again, making the most sense, combining those two buildings, so I got a request for four more SACs. So we combined those two. We figured that'd be a good step in year one.
I understand. So the only thing I'd ask is that on the unfunded?
Yeah.
We put the behavior therapist on here just so we can see. Is that each person's talking and trying to cross-reference it? I think that would be important.
We can do that.
To put it. The other one, it would be the same on the instructional interventionist if we add that. The number looks somewhat low, but I think they have three or four of those, so to add those to the position. But the one that I had a question on was the request for child daycare. Is that in the budget with which? And that might be the same. I'm looking at this like as if that was part of the budget, but if that was already shut down?
Yeah. Well, we've heard it in several different places. It's, it's an idea that may have traction down the road, but right now, I can't, you know, I didn't, I didn't, when I prioritize everything, I didn't think that was. But it may next year be in front of you. So the request is essentially to provide childcare for teachers so that.
For their children.
For their children, so that they can work.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I don't want to go into it. It's not in the budget, but it's obviously something that was presented, so.
But we also heard that in some of our meetings with the, you know, we did with the community and the staff and stuff. So it, again, it may be something that you're going to, that I would say, this is a request, but this year I didn't.
So I would ask then if that can go on here too, so that we know that that was requested but not able to be funded. And my only comment on that is I think we really need to look at the district. We've all agreed that early childhood's important, but we can't keep on, the buildings are packed. I think we need to do something bold and figure out a way to increase some space for early childhood. And when I saw this, that it was going to take one of the other spots, that was definitely not something I would support. But I just think we need to look across the whole district and figure out a different way to populate our schools, including that yesterday rather than what we do two years.
So we did have a subcommittee meeting with facilities two weeks ago, and we brought forward, well, three weeks ago, and then the committee voted on it, a couple of proposals. So we, we have some ideas on the table. And again, it's not going to be overnight, but the goal is, is that within like three short years, we probably expand three, four, for four-year-olds with new space and new places.
Yeah. I think we're on the same page. I just would rather do it quicker than I guess we're doing it. But with that, Ayew, thank you.
Josh?
Thank you. I just had a question that a colleague asked, so I got an answer to that. The school adjustment council, the additional one, going to be a half. And then the ESL lead that you requested, so that's not a full-time position now, it's only a stipend.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Now I understand a little bit more. Looking at this versus what she's presenting.
Yeah.
What's going on?
Right, right. I should have framed that, but I, I wanted to give the school committee the exact documents that principals brought forward. So at the end of every zero-based meeting, I had them write me a letter that said, here are all the things that, because I don't want to, I want full transparency.
And the only other thing that I heard, which certainly is great, is my colleagues have called here. You should have a walking school bus at every school to make that happen. That would be great. That's an excellent resource you have over there. With that, Ayew, thank you.
Next up, Sylvia.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to present on behalf of Sylvia. I'm going to echo what my colleague said as well. of Sylvia. I'm going to echo what my colleague said as well. I've been here for a year and a half, and I love it. I want to be here for many years. Sylvia is a great place to work, and so is Fall River. We have a very diverse population of students. We're a large school, around 780 students. We have a balance of high-quality veteran teachers with some newer teachers with a lot of enthusiasm who are learning very quickly. We've had two heavy lifts in the past year and a half. The first is around building our capacity with social-emotional learning and trauma-informs classrooms, trauma-sensitive classrooms, and also our tiered system of support on the academic side as well, really targeting our interventions and getting assessments in place that are going to give us data to target those interventions. So we've been putting those systems in place the last year and a half. Last year, we did add an interventionist, which helped a lot with the academic side. And so this year, we're really looking at the SEL side for our tiered supports. So we're asking for an additional student adjustment counselor. Right now, we have two adjustment counselors. The suggested ratio of student to student counselors is 1 to 250, and right now, they're about at 1 to 400. And the job is very dense. They need to take on a lot, a lot.
It's always been, it's always been those caseload numbers have always been high, always.
And to comment on the social skills groups, those really are the things that suffer the most because that's where the SACs get pulled from. If they have to respond to an emergency, or they have to have a 504 meeting, or they need to connect with the community, the social skills groups really suffer. So adding a SAC would really help us in that capacity, but in all the capacities, all the job responsibilities for a SAC. The two SACs we have now are amazing, and they work very hard. And by adding another adjustment counselor, it really helps with that student support. We're also asking for a learning center teacher. So this would be a teacher salary, a teacher role. And this is really speaking to being both proactive and reactive to the social-emotional needs of our students. When a student is dysregulated, a lot of times administrators are called to the classroom. Our goal is always to enter the classroom and support that student to keep him or her there. But sometimes, we have to take the student out of the classroom as well, just to get them regulated, to help them apply some of their strategies so they can get back to learning. What this role would do is kind of keep it all in one place. So this teacher would be responsible for reacting to those situations and also proactively building a relationship with these students. So many of them would have this included in their IEP, where they would visit this teacher, and they would work on specific skills, so that when the student is struggling, they can apply those skills and stay in the classroom where learning is happening and time on learning is happening. The third position is the clerk to help with the attendance. As Dr. Malone mentioned earlier, he was up at Sylvia a few weeks ago. We have two waves of students arriving. We have our regular ELT students, so K through five, which I don't know if any of you have been up there for that process, but it is a pretty involved process. Our clerks definitely could use another hand during that time. And then we have a second wave of pre-K students as well who come in. So really, that first few hours of the morning is all, you know, focused on attendance, making sure that students are accounted for. And then that clerk would also help us, that para would also help us out in the building for the rest of the day as well with student support and teacher support. So that's it for Sylvia.
Go ahead, Matt.
I just, this building also has something that we're trying to do different with the SOA money, and that is the learning center model of special education. So we have a position request for a learning center that we're going to try on as a proof point. So a learning center is very different than full inclusion, very different than co-teaching. And we haven't, this came up, Assistant Superintendent Loesch and myself, and Principal Lent said, let's do this at Sylvia. So that is a part of the Student Opportunity Act when we write up our proposal, is to try something new to get at student achievement.
Any questions for Sylvia? Kev?
Just on that same note, the learning center teacher, I read the write-up, and it does seem like it's an attempt to do something that's very needed. I think some of it, we always talk about it socially and emotionally, dysregulated students, but that also becomes behavioral. And I've been a big proponent of trying to figure out a way within the elementary schools of dealing with a student that's behaviorally not ready to be in a regular classroom. And I think this, maybe I'm wrong, but I think this would at least help a little. I don't think there's a requirement for this to be special ed, or is it...
Nope. We would, you know, we would prefer to have a teacher who has both a behavior and a therapeutic background, just to speak to the different needs of students.
But it could serve as a model of some other way.
Yes.
Do you currently have anything? What do you currently do with those tools that get to that point?
So it's, it depends on who's available. But usually, the SACs are on call, or administrators, myself or my vice principals, will go and support the student in the classroom.
Do you have in-school suspension?
Yes.
Where, who is, how does that get staffed?
So that typically happens in my office.
So you have the in-school suspension teacher too?
So we put into the budget two years ago, every building has a full-time sub. Some use those positions, some do what he's talking about, some use other positions to be able to run. We wanted to give each building the capacity and let them figure out how to do it.
I would just ask that, looking at consistency across the building, I think it shouldn't be open to interpretation or whatever use. I think we should have an in-school suspension program so that we're not suspending kids out, which I'm not saying that our numbers are that high, but you need a place where the kids can go, whether it's this model or something. But I don't think it should be an option. I think we should have an edic that comes down that says, each school will have it, and if you need more resources, now's the time to ask for them. Because I think we get caught up into like, I'm sure you're doing a great job, but you can't be principal doing what you need to do as an instructional leader in the building and having kids in there. I've been there, done that. It's very difficult. But I think if we need to support a program like in the school suspension or somewhere that the kids can go, because this is a young school. I don't think this is at any other school yet.
We have in-house suspension in pretty much every single school. We don't use the term edic because of the restorative justice practice model, but we've given every single principal the ability, and they do in-house suspensions frequently, in-school suspensions.
Yeah. All I'm saying, and we might be talking the same, the same language, just that I haven't read many of these presentations of any school or watched it on TV where somebody said that we have in-school suspension program. I know Dr. Malone's saying we've got the resources. I'd rather it just be in your dialogue or in your wording, okay, we have an in-school suspension, you know, so that it's labeled and articulated and stuff.
All right. I mean, I get what you're saying. I just want to be clear, though, that the principals make those determinations. We fully support in-house suspension. Up to them to figure out how to run it. That's kind of the model that we did.
Maybe would I, if I might ask, if we could just get that one pager on what each school uses for the in-school suspension?
Yeah, I can definitely work on that because it's something I've been thinking about anyway.
Thank you. The extended learning time has maybe gone away and all that with the budget. But how are you going to do your interventions if that doesn't?
If the extended learning time is cut?
Yeah, because I think one of the things I've known about the model is that when there's kids that need intervention academically, they utilize the time, the extended learning time, to do those targeted interventions at the extended learning time schools. But the schools that don't have that don't necessarily get that.
Right. And a big part of it is around the enrichment part of it. That's part of the ELT agreement, is the enrichment part. So what we're trying to do is embed it into the regular practice of teachers anyways, so that that tiered support is happening within the classroom at tier one and two. So the strong core is happening, then teachers are intervening by differentiating, and then our interventionists are giving the tier three to our 5%. So really, it would be just less time to do that. It wouldn't necessarily affect the structure.
Right. So that's a change from, maybe you implemented?
The tiered system?
I recall it being that when the students needed academic intervention, they might not get all of the other enrichment activities, but they would get extra time in the subject matter. Is that not happening?
It's not. So what we're trying to do now is make sure that all the students are getting what they need, admitting them where they are. So it's not just an RTI model. It also includes that enrichment as well. So it's not just targeting the students who are at the lower academic achievement or growth rate. It's also targeting students who need enrichment as well. So what we have is called intervention blocks. So at certain times within each classroom, for 30-minute periods, our interventionists and our teachers across the grade level are giving students targeted either enrichment, practice, or remediation. And they're grouped homogeneously.
Sounds like we're saying the same, similar thing.
So we're not getting rid of it. They're doing it during the day. If the ELT grants, the three schools, so Sylvia, Viveris, and CUS, if those, if that grant goes away, we got to come back to the committee and say, guys, this grant's gone away. I don't think I can fund it. And then we just go back to the other model. We're presenting to the committee next month, the ELT report. And in that, the recommendations are on an ideal ELT time, which isn't 90 minutes. And if we can get to scale across the district over the next few years, where we extend everybody and figure out what that cost is, that's something I'd love to see us do with the SOA money, but get to a place that's somewhere in between 20 and 90, you know? And maybe the answer is 45, or I don't know what the answer is. But let's just say, so I just know that this, the additional monies, and we'll, again, this is on the agenda for next, for March's meeting, the money, the total cost that we get for the ELT, if that goes away, we're talking about one point...
Almost $3 million.
Almost $3 million. I don't have, that's, you know, unless something really drastically changes in the House budget, we wouldn't be able to fund that. But I'm also, they do this every year, I'm banking that the House and the Senate will put it back in. It wasn't included in the governor's budget.
Okay. With that, I yield. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Josh?
So I noticed there's a couple of positions, like we were talking about, that don't get filled, that everyone requests. So I just, I hope those stay on everyone's radar. Moving forward, with additional monies become available, maybe we fill some of the needs. I mean, obviously, the principals know best, but they need their schools.
Yeah.
Two learning center specialists, SEL professional, so we just, I know each of you would have requests that were not filled, so.
So what we would hopefully do as we get along in the process, is we have a sheet of paper with positions that people want and are important, and we keep writing them down. And then at the end of the process, if there's money involved, the committee makes their decisions at that, if there's money available, make their decisions. We still, remember, we still don't know what the House and the Senate are going to do. If they come in higher than the governor's number, it's mandatory that we'll be at 100%, so I'm assuming we're in the ballpark right now. But I just can't, I wasn't able to do everything that, you know, everyone wanted to do. But the good news is, is those decisions are made by the committee.
Okay. Anything further? Tommy?
Yes, Mr. Lentz, I'm really curious to learn a little, back in my days at the alternative high school, we had a sort of concept of the learning center as well. When a kid couldn't regulate, you know, I would be in that room and try to get the kid back into regulation, you know, so that we could usher that child back into the classroom. Time on learning is just so incredibly weighted and important right now. So that's a great concept. Has it been vetted? Has that concept been vetted by the people that you think are going to run that? Is, how many students do you envision to be in the learning center at one given time?
We would use the same, we would use the same percentage base as you have for RTI. So really, we'd want to target that 5% the most at need in the building. So you're talking, you know, five to six students at grade level.
And targeted strategies?
Proactively.
And reinforcement of those strategies, time after time after time, reinforcement of those strategies, to try to get a kid in line with, you know, teachers' expectations in the classroom, so that child can go back to a classroom with expectations. The other thing that's piqued my interest are paraprofessionals with the social and emotional bend to it. Where'd that idea come from? That's a great idea.
So the reasoning with that is the same approach of us wanting to push in for tier two academic, right? We don't necessarily want to be pulling groups of kids all the time out of the classroom. We want it to be happening within the classroom. So what these SEL paras do is they go into the classroom, they support those students at a tier two level with applying strategies while they're accessing the content. So if a student is showing signs of dysregulation, the para can support this student with starting to apply some of those strategies before it gets to a level where he or she has to leave the classroom.
So are these paras mobile throughout the building? Are they not assigned to anyone, anyone, so they're like a district para within your building?
And they do lunch bunch, too. So they do meet with groups of students in sets of five or six during lunch periods to work as...
Yeah, which is a great form of social skills learning. And I know a lot of the elementary schools do lunch bunches. Do you ever envision even a little bit more than a lunch bunch, a social skills group?
So the SACs do run those, but not our SEL paras. That would take a few years of building their capacity in terms of how to do that appropriately.
And so do the SACs try to train the paras along certain guidelines so that they can provide that level of training to the students?
Yeah. So one of my vice principals, Ms. Homel, and then the two SACs work with the SEL paras on building their capacity. So they usually meet with them once a week, talk about students, they talk about certain strategies to apply with those students, and they just check in on how the students are doing with applying strategies on their own.
I haven't seen a lot of this in the, we've had paras for years and years and years. But now with a focus on SEL supports for a specific couple of paras, that's a great concept. I'm really curious to see how that's, I'm going to visit the school and check that out. I want to see in action. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Anything further? Next up, Watson.
Hi, everyone. My name's Celeste Hoag. I'm the principal of Watson. I've been there since July. I'm happy to have stayed in the district after having been in the ELL departments. I came into Watson, as Dr. Malone said, it's in year six of turnarounds. I took a hard look at sort of three areas, culture, instruction, and structure. I was lucky because all the staff came in over the summer to meet with me, so I got a good, well-rounded picture. We are pretty well-staffed at the moment, so I'm not asking for a lot of positions. We do have four administrators. We have one and a half ESL teachers. We have two and a half special educators, two coaches, 12 classroom teachers, two interventionists. And I started out the year with five paraprofessionals, but the district has been very supportive. I asked for an SEL para after consulting with Michael Loesch several times, and I asked for a three-to-five para. I do have an instructional support liaison, that $30,000 position. I would like another one. I think that's on the TBD list. And I also asked this year for a lead teacher, and I would like next year to have an additional lead teacher for a $4,000 stipend. My big conversion here, having done the work similar in another building for five years, is to convert the two coaches to a department head position. I've been a coach at the building level, and I've been a department head at the building level, under turnaround situations for five years. I had a discussion with Dr. Malone at our budget meeting, and I just think the level of work that needs to be done at Watson needs someone at a department-level position rather than at a coaching position. The two coaches I have are phenomenal, and the work is getting done. The model this year at the school is different than it has been in past years, I'm told. I came in with a strong coaching background, so I implemented a strong coaching model with structured professional learning committee meetings. And that was different than what had happened, what I'm told from teacher feedback. I think moving forward to help move the building from sort of a stagnant place of where it is with regards to data, if you look back on the data for three years, it's just flat. If you look at the accountability sheets from DUC, you know, it says making gains, but at a low rate. You know what I mean? So it's, you know, there were some declines here and there, but overall, the data is just sort of stagnant. So in order to move the building forward, I'm drawing on my own experience in converting the two coaches to one department head position. One, yes. I do, I would also, to help in, with that position, I would like an additional lead teacher. So I'd have two lead teachers at the $4,000 stipend. And then to help with that, with the phone calls, we do make calls every day. We only have 264 students. My last check today was 257, but we do have a little bit of a transient population. But we do make calls every day. It's either made by the clerk in the office, or by one of the school adjustment counselor, or the student support coordinator. We have defined those roles, the student support coordinator and the SAC pretty, in pretty, like Alicia was talking about, in pretty significant lanes. So, but they do have some commonalities, and one of those commonalities is helping to make those calls home. So calls are made every day to families to inquire why students aren't at school. We have a wonderful attendance officer, Maria Kennedy. She comes every Wednesday. She's with us every Wednesday. She troubleshoots. She reaches out. She home visits. So in our attendance today was 94.5. We're running, if you do the X2 report correctly, we're running at about a 13% chronic. My goal is to keep it at 15 or under. So, but we did, we did get hit pretty hard with the flu this year. So, but that's where we're at. So that's my, that's my request.
Go ahead, Tommy.
So it's a nice one-unit school with that old-fashioned woodwork inside. It's a great place. Is the map, is the district that supplies Watson, does it cross over to Fonsky's district? Is it close to Fonsky's? Is it close to Fonska's district?
It's close, yeah, it's close. I don't, I only have thirteen percent.
Contiguous.
Yeah.
Ls, and she gets my, Fonska gets my foundational students bussed over.
Some of the turnover, just the whole population.
Well, if we could, if we could get somebody to do like a, a walk-in school bus or something like that, to cause the one-unit school?
Yep, we have, we have walking patrol, and the school S R O, Sergeant Potato has talked about coming in, and she's, she's taken it on this year at some schools, and I think we're on her list of sort of, you know, training up the kids. But, we do have several teachers who do the walking patrol at the end of the day. So, I like your idea to kind of fit that in for the beginning of the day, because I think that would just be a natural request for some teachers. So, it's definitely something I'm intrigued by.
That's great.
Yeah.
Keep your visions there and make it happen. I know the numbers, you know, the numbers don't speak to me, because I realize the effort put forth to try to maintain, and I want to praise you for taking on a really big task this year at, at working on that and keep trying to turn it around, so with that I yield.
Maybe, maybe, is there anything else? Josh, then Matt.
Real quick, so, the budgets, we have those department heads, right? And that's, it eliminated the two coach positions that this needs, and then just the one instructional support personnel?
Mm-hmm.
And they'll help with the techs, so that's the only position there. And then, the stipend.
Yep.
We, I just want to be, we have one error. The conversion of the two coaches can equal the department head and the.
The teacher.
The.
The instructional support.
Mm-hmm.
It's just not in the figure. So, that's the, so you don't see it, but it's in there. So, we'll correct that, and, and you'll see it at the next meeting. So, it's in there, you just don't see it. You get what I'm saying? The money is there, we just.
Okay.
We screwed that up.
You all set, Josh?
Yes.
Mimi, then Kev.
I, I love what you're doing with this school. I visited, I enjoyed it. Can you just give me a few details on what your student support coordinator on a daily basis?
So, there was a new position for me coming in. We had always just had S A Cs in my previous district, and so, we really sat down and we talked about what the rules were, and I see it come alive in the building, and I don't know whether we could live without it. Both women, I'm lucky, are, have very similar credentials, have high-end mental health credentials, have, one has her own private practice, one, they're both licensed social workers, and one has, you know, has done crisis work a lot in the community at St. Vincent's and elsewhere. But, the way the rules are defined, if we're talking about wraparound services for families, and I think some of the other principals at the table can attest to this, sometimes we get families that come in and might be overwhelmed themselves, you know, so where's that? And I always say the acronym incorrectly, but how do we get those in-home therapy services for the family, that I T C piece? That's the student support coordinator's job, you know, we really define that. This year, we've actually increased some of that in-home support for families, which has benefited our kids getting to school on time, being in school. I think we've done it with ten to twelve families, and we had, we had, we had a very big meeting today, and as a result of one of those, I think it's I T C, in-home therapy. So, in therapy home, yeah. But, that's the big, that's the big difference. You know, the SAC definitely, like Alicia spoke to, you know, provides the five oh four and the, and the I E P services. The student support coordinator does not do that. That was some really defining pieces we talked about this summer. But, in terms of the mental health pieces and the reaching out to families and making sure families have those wraparound services, it's really beneficial. It's, it's been helpful this year. But, they do have, in my case, similar credentials, and I'm lucky that I have.
Being two of the elementary that do really depend on this position, I'm just trying to maybe foresee, maybe the future a little bit.
Yeah.
Right, it works really well where they have student support centers in their building, and that person's like the quarterback of service.
Yeah, we have, through the city, we have sort of, somehow we got involved with Mr. Cory's daughter, and she helped us get a grant for a.
Zen Den.
Zen Den. And so, we collect data for the agency that gave us the grant, and it's really the student support coordinator that's taking that on. You know, it's, she's not the only one who uses it, it's used by many different kids and adults, but in terms of the data to show the city that we need that, it's amazing.
If that process.
Tommy.
I'm sorry.
Are there any other schools using the Zen Den?
I know Henry Lord is.
You are doing it?
We have one, yes.
Yeah.
Sylvia?
I yield, thank you.
Kev?
Do we know how much money the student support coordinator makes in relation to a school adjustment company?
My, my SAC has been there for about eight years, so she's at a higher rate, and my student support coordinator came in, so it's above the, the low eighties, high seventies. I think she came in.
It's right, it's a different group in the F R A A contract.
I just think in the, in the tenor of the conversation, that needs to be clear to all of the committee members, so that when I'm looking at, looking at a budget and you see different positions, we have to take into consideration what level they're at and how much money they make. You're talking probably at least ten thousand dollars more for a student support coordinator versus a SAC. In many cases, there's always the, how many years people have been in and all that. But, they, I think we, as a body, need to get that info so that we can make more informed decisions on what, what that stuff is made of. So, when I look at the, at the Watson, I just, looking at the whole budget and looking at the small number of students and the amount of resources that we keep pumping into that school, and the results are just not there over six or seven years, it begs, to me, it begs the question of, is there a time to make a different model?
So, the model that was being used, and I wasn't there, I didn't visit it often in my two years prior in the district, but we sort of, for lack of a better word, Mr. Almeida, we just kind of zipped it up a little bit. There were intervention blocks, but what was being done in the intervention block? So, and I didn't look backwards, because out of respect, I just sort of looked forward, and we call them what I need blocks, win blocks. We have a K to two win block in the morning, every morning from eight fifty to nine forty. It's sort of, all of our human resources that are available are in with K to two at that point, push in and pull out. And then, at the end of the day, from one forty to two thirty-two, I think, we have the three to five win block. And again, same personnel, interventionists. My coaches actually take student groups twice a day, because I just feel like they're the experts in the building. Having been a coach, I took student groups, they take groups as well. So, you know, we need to have our experts with our kids, and that's the math interventionists, the E L A interventionists, and the coaches, and then the special educators, too. You know, and our S A Cs also take groups, the SAC and the student support coordinator or the S E L para will take a group. Not every day, it's usually three times a week, because again, what I need, it might be academic, it might be social-emotional, so you have to, you know, look at the whole child for that intervention.
Do you have a lot of buses? Do you have a lot of kids last year?
No, I don't have any buses, it's a walking school. I have two vans that come from the Ruben Street Homeless Shelter, and we have a relationship with the, with the folks that work over there, they're wonderful women, and they've helped us a lot with attendance, not only just with the attendance officer, but with us as well. You know, forming that partnership with families, being in school, us going over there. We tried to set up something as like an after-school program, but their grant money wouldn't allow it to sort of come in and do sort of an additional time, not only with their students, but with our students, but their state funding, they couldn't rewrite it or something, so.
I'd just, being honest, the way that I look at it is, we keep talking in the district about a early childhood center, K one, two, multiple years down, maybe we'll spend millions of dollars on, on renovating schools in the other parts of the city. This, to me, really just begs for remodeling the whole school, moving it to a K to two or early childhood center for the whole school, help all the other schools in the district, and also those other students when they get older could go to a different place. So, I just think that the amount of resources that we're putting in for a short number of students is not a good use of our dollars, and, and we've done this over, you're new there. This has been going on for year after year after year. So, when I say, I think we need to look at a different model, is maybe close the school and open it up as something different would be my personal opinion, and that really should be, with a school of only two hundred and fifty kids with six or seven, you know, administrators, the resources are there, and just, as one member, I think it just begs in the discussion of whether this is even worth doing, or should we do something different? I'm not looking to put you on the spot, it's not at all, I'm just giving you my opinion, and I yield, and that's it, just, that's what I think.
Okay. All right.
Just one, just one real quick question. When I was on the school committee, I think maybe six years ago, I worked with the members on the school committee at, in Watson School, and because they had such a, the population of the students, and they really didn't have anywhere to go for physical activity, I think it was in the basement, it was in the gym, I think outside, they've done a good job with it in the, in the spring and summer, but my, we also, I think, worked with the boys' club. Are the kids still going to the boys' club?
They, yep, we have our basketball practices over there.
Okay. And they use, occupying this, this pool and?
We haven't been using the pool, but we, we used.
I think they did it last, when I was on, when I was here. I'm just saying, I'm just asking, because it's just, we wanted to do something for, for the kids, because they didn't have anywhere really to recess in the wintertime. So, I just wanted to see if that was still going on, with, with the guys at the boys' club, but also, I'm sorry.
Boys and girls club?
Well, boys and girls club, I'm sorry. And, so I just want to make sure that that, that was still, that was still.
Still the case. We do have a partnership with Talbot.
Okay.
On Thursdays, we have an after-school club program, and Talbot was sending over some of their mentors in a van with a teacher and working in our after-school club program. Now, we've taken a week off, and the three teachers I have designing this program along with Mr. Opozo's sort of lead twenty-first century group over there, we want to reverse it, we want to, once a month, go over there, because we want our kids to see where they're going to feed into, the awesome gym, the science labs. I think he has a CrossFit room, things like that, so we want to, you know, bring that over there, and that's probably, we're gonna, I think we already got Mr. Almeida's approval, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Last up, Doran.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with everyone a little bit tonight about our school and about our efforts to continuously improve. The Doran is a, as you know, a pre-K to eight school, so we have ten grades. Our pre-K program is a full-day program, it's not a half-day program, it's a full-day program. Even though we are broad in grade levels, we're pretty small within each grade level, we're just a two-unit school, starting with pre-K extending all the way up through eighth grade. We do also have three substantially separate classrooms at the Doran School that service students with social-emotional needs in K through five, so we have three separate rooms there. In terms of our budget requests for the fiscal year twenty-one, we're looking to maintain our current staffing currently, as well as add three additional positions. Our requests for the additional positions are based on two sort of sources that we looked at. One was our achievement data, and by that I mean not only our M C A S data in terms of proficiency, but more specifically, looking very closely at our accountability data from last year. And then, the second area of focus that we wanted to look at is, of course, the district's budget priorities. Fortunately, I feel that the three positions that we're requesting tend to meet both of those needs. So, we are looking to add kindergarten through fifth-grade interventionist position. At the Doran School, we have, as others have referenced, kind of a win block or an intervention enrichment model. We do have that in place for K through eight, where students get thirty minutes of E L A enrichment and intervention daily, as well as thirty minutes of math. In order to make that schedule work, we kind of pull kind of all hands on deck, so I currently have a few of our general education paras that are running small groups, as well as my department heads, both in math and E L A. The goal with adding this interventionist position is that some of those general ed paras would be able to return more to some of the classroom support duties that fit some of what other folks have referenced as some of the S E L para, academic para work, so they wouldn't be tied down quite as much to the intervention block. And then, also, I love having my department heads providing intervention two times a day, and they love it as well. However, they are also working with teachers from nine grades, and so their time is pretty thin as well. The second position I'm requesting is a second science teacher. So, currently, we have one science teacher that teaches all science in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so she preps for all three grades, she sees every sixth, seventh, and eighth grade student every day. So, with the addition of this science teacher, we would split that, where the current teacher would teach seventh and eighth grade science, and then the new position would teach fifth and sixth grade science. Science, in terms of overall proficiency, is the only area that we had a decrease in our M C A S scores last year. It's a concern for us, as you know, fifth and eighth grade are tested, and so this would be another way to sort of target that need as well. And then, lastly, so the addition of a special ed inclusion teacher. We do have currently five inclusion teachers at the Doran School to service the nine grades, K through eight. Pre-K does their own special ed inclusion teachers through the classroom teachers. So, this position would be to cover that breadth of grades, as I mentioned before. When you look at sort of the combination of the push-in and the pull-out minutes, our current special ed inclusion teachers are pretty stretched based on the number of grades we have and our schedule challenges with that. And specifically, when you're looking at our bottom twenty-five percent of our students at the Doran School last year, fifty-six percent of those students were students with I E Ps, and so we want to make sure that we're really responding to that need. One other thing I want to circle back to on the interventionist position, one thing that really struck us as we looked at our bottom twenty-five percent from last year is twenty-three percent of that bottom twenty-five percent are students who do not receive special ed services and who do not receive L services. So, those are twenty-three percent of our students in that group that I think we can better reach through our intervention model, which further supports the interventionist request. And with that, open any questions folks might have.
I just have a, and I'll defer to the chair, not necessarily for Doran, although I like the idea of identifying the need in a school in terms of your science needs, certainly making that request, it makes sense, and I think I've heard that across the board. I was just looking at, when you mentioned adding a science teacher, I quickly went to the data that's been provided to us, and our district's at seventy-nine percent, either partially meeting or not meeting expectations, and the state's around fifty-two, so certainly an area, obviously, that we need to be supportive of, so. But, I have more of a generalized question about the overall budget, I can yield, and when the questions are done, it's probably more apt for the superintendent and Mr. Almeida than any of the principals here, so I'll yield.
Kev?
So, the, I see here that the cluster coordinator, do we add the?
I believe that's through the special programs budget, yes.
So, if you look at special ed on the first page of that budget request, his school would get a cluster coordinator, given that the, we're gonna, that, that emotionally impaired classroom strand is growing there, they'll get a cluster coordinator because of the numbers, but he also gets a special ed inclusion teacher, so you see those listed under district supports, but they're at his building. So, that's on the first page. Then, the other three positions that he mentioned are on, on the following page, under his school-specific.
The only reason why I say this, I'm curious, and I maybe have to look back at that, to why you're getting a cluster coordinator at the school with only four hundred and ninety-six students.
He's got, he has emotionally.
That's specific to the strand for the, because it's a district program, the three social-emotional classrooms that I have, those are students that come from all of the district, they're not necessarily Doran neighborhood students, and so because of that cluster, that strand, this position would support the needs of those students and teachers specifically, not the larger school.
What grades are they in?
Kindergarten through fifth grade.
And it's going to grow to eight.
So, I, excuse me for not knowing that, but, so you have three classrooms, K to five?
Correct.
No, 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 well, yes, three, three classrooms within that, so they're split by grades one, two, three, and then, or one, two, three, four, and then five.
Exactly. More or less, K one, we have K one room, a two, three room, and a four, five room. Each are built for twelve or thirteen students.
And what kind of resources are in there?
So, there's a teacher, and then there's also two paraprofessionals for each of those classrooms. That's the sort of the district model across other schools that have similar strands.
And where is it, there's no other school that has those classes?
So, the Vivera. So the Viveras also has a social-emotional strand for, at the elementary level. And then there's also the community, there's the learning, there's the ASD program, all kinds of different. But the two social-emotional strands for elementary, one is at Doran and one's at the Viv.
And then we have one at Morton and a new one opening at Talbot.
Yeah. I mean, if you asked me, I thought when we created those positions, that there was going to be an ASD component to that because those numbers are really high.
There is.
Where is that on the...
That's just, Henry Lord.
Henry Lord doesn't show up on here, but cluster coordinators, I see it says Doran, Cuss, Talbot, and Durfee.
Yeah, I think, I believe Henry Lord already has this. That's right, Henry Lord already has one. Yeah, that's right. They're getting the BCBA's.
Yeah, just, just a thought. What do you think, just looking at the numbers of, I'm not saying you don't have any needs there, but if you compare your number of five hundred students to the number of support staff and administrators, it's really high compared to other parts of the district. I know we added some things in, but that, but that's also something to look at when you look at, it looks like everything that you've asked for is in the budget, basically. Because I don't see Doran on the non.
The SEL parish should be on, that one parish is on. Last request.
Yeah, so like that's the smallest amount of money. When I look at it, I think that may, to me personally, that makes more sense than some of the other, you know, positions. And I'm not saying you don't have needs, but don't get me wrong. I just think when you look at it, big picture, there's a lot of resources that are going into that school and you need them. But if comparing a school with seven hundred students and eight hundred students, what do they have for administrative support? That's what I'm looking at here. And it does look like you're a little heavy in that comparison, but that's more of a district discussion, so I'm not looking for...
Yeah, the only comment I would make on that is, as I understand, the numbers would be different in terms of total student population. I think that the unique grade span configuration at the Doran does present some different challenges in terms of the support staff that are needed to sort of flex throughout ten grade levels to support student needs, even though the quantity of students might be different, the needs are broad.
Yep, no, I respect that. Along those same lines, when we look at a K to eight school, they don't have guidance councils.
Correct.
Middle schools have a couple of guidance councils that do some of that work. But that same issue is happening across the whole school, so it's not only you all who ask that same question in all the places. But I do think that it's a tough school, you're working hard to do the best you can down there, and I do appreciate it. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further?
Yeah, no, Doran's, Doran's running good, but I'm curious, what schools feed into your middle school component?
They're Doran, they stay.
All Doran. So whatever, whatever kids are there from K through five...
Fifth grade just rolls right up.
They stay there.
Correct. We lose a couple periodically, but I would say that ninety-eight percent of our students stay with us through sixth grade.
And the work on the adjustment counselors, because they're dealing with elementary and middle school levels, so is it all adequate?
Yeah, so we have it sort of split, so one of the Saks covers pre-K to three and then the other services four to eight and kind of also works a little bit as that guidance counselor currently as well. Though we also do have a student support coordinator, similar discussions we've had. She has a sort of variety of roles that she does to sort of back up some of that work. But she works very closely with our community partners and more of that clinical experience.
Are there any social skills groups going on?
Daily, all the time. Yeah, by all three, all three of those individuals provide those groups.
That's really good. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Thank you, guys. We really appreciate you coming out, answered a lot of questions. Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not for any of the principals, thank you all for presenting tonight and good job. More for the administration, but so, as I'm going through, as the school's recording...
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
You don't just give your eyes.
So, as I'm going through each of the schools in the budget, so we're supposed to be using a zero-based budget model. So then why is it that we've used averages for all of our teachers and administrators?
Because you use averages so no one can pick what they want, veteran, both new teachers. You always use averages in, using this model.
Well, so when you have a vacancy, you would use an average because you don't know what position you're at.
No, you use, they're all equals the total at the end. It all rolls into the actual expenditure in the district on salaries.
Right, but if you know the salary of an individual in fiscal year nineteen, and you add whatever percentage increase they're going to get for either a step increase, a percentage as far as CBA, why wouldn't you list that as salary?
It's all here. We have it, we have, everything is in the binder. It's everybody's, everybody's actual salary is in the tab called FY21 Budget Summary, listed by person.
Right. And we had this discussion, the reason I'm bringing it up is because this was a discussion we had with the council last year when we were there. They were looking for why using averages. We explained to them, but we, my understanding of why we don't put the exact number in, in this piece of it was so that we don't pick choose the times when we may have to cut funding.
Well, that's, that's part of it.
Right.
It's part of it. But we use, what we do is we take, we take these salaries that we're paying at a given point and we take that salary and we move it up based on what we anticipate the percentage to be. And we come up with an average salary based on what the salaries are that are being paid. And that's the actual, that's the average salary that's used here in the town.
And what's the benefit for doing that? As opposed to just listing what the principal or vice-principal makes and the teacher makes, dollar for dollar? What's the benefit of doing what you just said? We take the total salary, we add a percentage, we roll it up, and then we divide by how many positions and we put an average. What's the benefit from doing that as opposed to truth and advertising important? If principal A makes a hundred and five thousand rather than important eighty-eight thousand, we put a hundred and five thousand. What's the benefit?
For us, it's an equalization piece on the total selection. Principals are building their, their budgets from zero. A new teacher only costs forty grand. We don't use that salary. We use the actual average of all teachers.
Right, an average for a new vacancy, but if someone's in there, why wouldn't you use their salary?
I think what, I think the only problem we're having in semantics on this issue, Mark, is that I can put together an employee list of every single salary.
We have it, it's in there. We have it.
So why is, so what's the complaint?
There's no complaint.
But there is with the city council.
And I'm not worried about their complaint.
I'm not worried about it either.
I'm worried about, we're going to get this budget and we're going to take a vote on it. And I'm looking at a principal and a vice-principal both making the same amount. And that's not true. So why wouldn't we...
So would we get more mature? Next year when we do this, or I can go back and do it now, we'll average the principal salaries because it's a standalone thing. You get what I'm saying?
Right. You have a total salary for, let me just pick a school, the last one we just did, Doran. So you have a total salary operating FTEs of three million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, but that's based on averages. That doesn't tell me as a member of this committee whether, how much we're spending in salaries for a particular school. It just gives me an average.
Right, but you've got to remember, when we started the process four years ago, we took Doran's budget. Let's call it three million dollars, well, let's call it two and a half then. We took two and a half million dollars, we looked at the total number of positions that they had, we added it all up, and we said, this is the figure you can spend up to. Because this is what your operating budget was the previous year. Anything above that, you've got to make a value judgment around what your need is.
Right.
That's the value of zero-based budget.
So that's what I'm getting at. So if this is an average rather than an actual, and you're asking to add more positions, to me, it's more beneficial if I know exactly how much we're spending in salaries there before I add another position there. So I understand, I understand, I understand using averages. I'm just saying that...
But maybe in years where you had no money, that was important, but it's such in the weeds on this issue, it doesn't sound like it's so important. I can give you a list of...
Well, it is when you, when you, if you're going, listen, so then let's not say we zero base budget.
But we do. But zero-based budgeting...
Not, not, not in this budget.
Yes, we do.
Because you don't have the actuals, you just have a...
You don't use actuals in zero-based. You can't.
Why, why couldn't you?
Because, because people would be cutting positions basi...
Who would be cutting positions?
Principals. I don't want that position. It's eighty thousand dollars.
But principals don't cut positions.
I want two forty thousand dollar positions.
Principals don't cut positions.
No, the requests would be that way. That's why you eliminate that by using averages. So then every position just costs the same.
And what prevents them from going and looking to the front?
It doesn't matter. Who cares? The average, I don't understand why we get, in every year we have this argument with the city council, get caught up in the, yet they have the list. Here's what Joe makes. It takes the politics out of it, too.
Listen, you're not, you're talking to the wrong person when it comes to that, because I was the proponent and I fought every request going back since it was made by Councilor Mitchell regarding names, because I sat here when we took votes on who the person was, not necessarily what the position need was. So you, you don't have to sell me on that one, Mr. Superintendent.
So I can, I can put together a list of total...
What I'm saying though, is that for each school, I get a percentage, an average of the salaries. I don't get the actual salaries for each school.
It's, it's tough to look at it that way, because it is a system, it all equals out at the very end. And don't forget, some of these positions...
So if you could just then, and I'll end, I'll end on this, if you can get me some, something on zero-based budget that you've used in the past, where they've used...
There's one book written, this one book written on zero-based budget was written in nineteen sixty-one. I have it in my office. It will put you to sleep before you even get through the first door.
No, no, I just want you to, if you can, work...
There is no literature on zero-based budgeting.
Okay. My understanding of it is that you take the year prior, you roll everything that's fixed that you know forward. And obviously, if there are vacancies, certainly use a percentage, because you don't know who you're going to hire. I'm okay with that. And in years past, we used to use a percentage for the vacancies. Now it seems we've used a percentage for every position, even the ones we know.
Of course we have.
And so I'm just saying, right, and I'm just saying, for purposes of sitting here looking at what resources are being poured into each school, a percentage doesn't tell me whether or not school A or school B's got more resources in it.
You have, I mean, we've given you more granular information than this committee's ever seen before in terms of budgeting.
Right, and, and I'm thankful for that. I'm just saying that if we're going to go on this mantra that zero-based budget, unless that one book that's going to put me to sleep says we use averages, then my understanding of zero base is you take what you know is a fix and you roll it forward to the next year, your vacancies use an average on, and you move forward from that in terms of any additions you would put in. That's my, maybe I'm the only one on the issue, but I just raise it because I've noticed it across the schools here.
So if you think about the entire operating budget, it's called a hundred and fifty million dollars. This year it's a hundred and seventy-five, let's just call it a hundred and fifty. You actually can see what your salary, your actual salary expenses increases are. We have all that information. It's just not presented, it's got two, so there's two presentations in there, right? There's the zero-based model that we use to build budgets, and then there is the actual with the total cost for each of the buildings. But what you're saying is that you don't, you want to see an actual for each building based on the, sort of what their actual school costs for each building, even though it equals something at the very end that we have as a bottom figure of a hundred and seventy-five million. You want to see it by sixteen buildings.
All I'm saying is that if you take your professional salaries from FY20 and you roll it to FY21, okay? If you use an average, I'm just saying, from where I sit, if you hire someone at less than what your average is, you're going to end up with professional salaries that may equate to an additional one point five or two million dollars that you're not spending.
And that's...
And I'm just saying, when you're making an argument for budgets and what needs to be spent and the city's putting in their percentage, personally, I think your approach, and granted, through attrition, you're always going to have that, that fluctuation. I'm just saying, if we approve this budget, you may actually have additional salaries tucked in here. So, and that doesn't even account for a hundred, that doesn't even account for the hundred and six positions, new positions you're asking for that you may not fill.
But don't forget, we have positions we've never filled that we still have on the budget from years past.
Right. We were doing a two, with ninety-eight percent, we had about a two percent. So when we budgeted our professional salaries in years past, because of that same argument, we never fully had a hundred percent of our professional salaries line budgeted, because at any given time throughout the course of a fiscal year, you never had a hundred percent of your positions filled. So we always went with the ninety-eight percent so that we weren't asking the council for money that we were going to sit and keep set, and keep sitting, excuse me, in professional salary lines later to be transferred to another area of the budget.
Right, and that most districts, all they have for contingency is what's been years and years built into their professional salary lines.
Right.
We've eradicated that down over the last nine, ten years of, you know, that you've been on the committee.
Right.
So it's pretty tight right now.
And I'm saying that if you give us an accurate depiction of what you have in salaries known, last fiscal or this fiscal?
Yeah.
And the difference is two million, that's going to sit in professional salaries, and you want to say of that two million, I'd like to keep one million of, a million and a half of that and put another half a million in contingency? At least it's listed that way. I'm just saying, anybody looking at this budget when you're using averages, if you know budgets, know there's money there.
Well, yes and no, because I also signed the hiring, you know, today I signed five more. Some positions that they're budgeted average salary at sixty-one are coming in at seventy-five.
Okay.
Or paras that are coming in...
So let me ask you this. In FY20, this year's budget, how are we doing, what percent, do you have the, oh, shoot, I don't have it. Do you have the percentage of professional salaries we've expended to date, to February?
In the professional salary line item, that one line item?
Yeah.
Or, we're pretty much on track on that one line item. If you're talking about like teacher salaries, there is, there is some savings.
There's savings in it, right?
Yeah, every year there is.
Okay, no, I know there is. And there'll be, they will be in this. I'm just saying, what percentage of that will be savings? And is it better to list it as professional salaries because you do averages, or is it better to take it and list it as contingency? That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so...
Let's call it what it is.
I think we're speaking the same language. I can put that together, which is essentially looking at actuals for all salaries by school, percentage spent year-to-date, you can get a handle on what do we have and spent in salaries, what could we use to buy...
We get that the monthly, we get those monthly budget reports.
You get that, right.
I see that.
You get that already.
But I'm just saying, in your proposed budget...
Yeah.
I'm going to venture to guess, if you gave us actuals as opposed to what you have, so just do this, where you have the actuals, total it up, and what you have in proposed averages, total that up and what, and let us know what the difference is. My guess is it's going to be more than what you have in actuals, but the question will become, how much more is it? And is it better suited to be there in professional salaries or a percentage of that left there because you may have to hire someone, as you mentioned, higher than what the average is? I get it. But is it better to list the difference in contingency? Because ultimately, that's what it becomes. Let's face it, the teacher salary line, when you don't expend that, fourth quarter, you're going to come back to the school committee and say you want to do all these transfers and a bunch of that money's going to come from teacher salaries.
And that's where it comes from.
So...
And that's where it comes from.
I, I know, because we vote on them, so that's what I'm saying.
So we, we also built, I mean, I love, you know, I love the term contingency. We built in, where we had two hundred thousand in this one, in this budget.
That's listed as contingency.
Which is listed.
But I'm gonna say, you probably want about a million in contingency.
We have to see where it falls out in the following year when the payroll, when the pay, no, that's, that's the issue. You don't know where payroll's gonna fall. I hate to say that, but that's the reality.
Well, we do know what we're spending now. We do know how many of those people are likely to come back and what their salary would look like. What you don't know is how many vacancies, and obviously, that's why you use an average.
Correct.
Because you, you can't predict what you're gonna spend in those, and that's why we've always used an average. And I'm okay with vacancies being averaged, but actual positions being averaged?
All right, Cap, you done, Mike?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you done?
Yeah.
So what do we submit to the public when we do public advertising of the budget? The advocates or the actuals?
They get the whole thing. They get the whole binder.
So it's not an issue of that we don't post it?
No, it's all there. Everything, this whole binder that is here in front of you will be in front of them.
Included to the council.
Yeah.
So they, I understand why people wouldn't wanna see that. My experience is, when you have to cut 2 million dollars from a budget that's level funded, which is how those that have been around had to deal with this, internal financial controls and all that is totally different than what we're dealing with now. So what I think happened is, when we started to get money over the last six, eight years, we, as a committee, not we, because I wasn't here, we took all of the internal financial controls that we had passed as policy and threw it all up. And we gave it back to the administration and say, just give us this and give us that. I think we need to come somewhere in the middle, because we don't have as many internal financial controls as we once had. For instance, we used to have, when any line item was projected to be in a deficit, the end of the year, quarterly, we had to make a transfer. We had that as a policy. It's no longer our policy. That's something I think we should bring back. The other piece of it, when you look at the averages and all that, this all started, in my opinion, when Nick Fisher was superintendent.
But when did, was this, because the state said your policies were not feasible and asked for those changes?
No, I think it was.
Because who changed? If you had a policy, how did it change?
Because the committee went through and took all of the policies, and we did all of the policies.
More confidence in the administration.
And it was just basically, I think the committee, not in a smart move, took all of their authority as far as financial, like, decisions and stuff, and kind of threw it away, in my opinion. We could always go back and research it. But we used to, we had to have a policy, which I think deals with what you said, is we said FTEs was counted. So if I'm in school A, I had 50 FTEs, 10, 20 teachers, whatever it was.
Yeah.
We actually had a policy that said each school, each additional FTE had to be approved by this committee. So that controlled what you're talking about, a principal saying, hey, I got a teacher making 80, but I can hire three paras for 75, and then we were getting hit with the health insurance and that. So in order to eliminate that, because that's what we're, a superintendent in the past told teachers, you look at the total amount you're spending, and then you can just add more people. We're like, whoa, what the heck's this? So we had controls in place.
Right, but we still bring forward, we don't create a position without school committee's request, or permission.
Right.
We don't, we did, I built in contingency, and over the summer, I say, look, I needed an extra ESL position, we hire and come back. But there's no positions that we create without the committee's approval. If lines are in deficit, I mean, we have a quarterly and a, we have monthly reports, so what does the school committee not have?
It's not a requirement, basically, what I'm saying. So right now, there's nothing in policy that says we're gonna get, when a line item's projected to be in a deficit, that we automatically get a quarterly transfer. That doesn't happen, and it's not policy. So I don't blame you for not doing it, because it's not policy. But we're definitely not transferring quarterly, on a quarterly basis, the projection at the end of the year until it gets towards the end of the year, as Mr. Costa said.
You do quarterly.
We, as much, as much as we can, we do quarterly.
They do quarterly, so.
I do, I do wrap it up, I do, I do wrap it up.
But if we had a policy that said each quarter, you have to project out for the year, if everybody gets their full salary, and you had to come to us for a transfer of that exact amount, that's not what's happening now.
Yeah, that's what.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
Right, but why would we wanna do that in policy? I think less, more policy is way too restrictive, and less policy.
As I said, it was when we had, we had to make decisions about, let's, we're gonna cut 50 people, we're gonna cut 40.
But if we have a good working relationship, I don't know what the problem would be.
I'm not suggesting it's a problem right now, because we have a lot of money. So that's all I'm saying, is some of this back.
But we also have a good relationship.
And a different level of trust.
I, I'm not denying that.
That's the key.
In the minute, if, if we were ever, and I will say, I will say this audibly, if we were ever in a situation where I knew there was a real issue, you would be, you guys would find out tomorrow. You would, you would know that there was an issue. I'm not sounding the alarms, things, things are moving.
I understand it. I'm not trying to sound the alarms to say, yeah, all in all, when I look back to see, when I first got back on this committee, I said, let's look at the policies to see what we're dealing with. They're gone. Policies are gone on financial controls. But to go back to the zero-based budgeting issue, I personally have been saying for, since I've been on this committee, the school department doesn't do zero-based budgeting, and neither does the city. It's a, it's a buzzword, and that's all it is.
No.
Because true zero-based budget is not, you take what you have currently and you roll it forward. True zero-based budgeting, even if you read that boring book which I read that you gave, it looks at value judgments.
My God, you read it.
It looks at value judgments, like I said earlier.
And we talked about value judgments tonight.
I get it, but that's the ten, the main premise that I saw when I read that book, was that you stop from zero. That means if we can say we can do a job and take his position and my position, and we can do this, get the same result for the children with a different model or different position, then you change it. It's not meant for, let's keep everybody the same, let's carry it forward, and then see what we can add. That's not zero-based budget, in my opinion.
Right, but, so, let's just all agree that there are no experts in the world on zero-based budgeting anywhere near Massachusetts right now. The best models that are happening in this are Brockton, Boston, and Fall River. The issue with zero-based budgeting is, we're doing a hybrid, because every year here, our budgets go up in Massachusetts. So it's, it would be a foolish exercise to just say, let's start at zero and just spend whatever we were the prior year. Is it, but you gotta have a ceiling, or it doesn't work. Because if you have no ceiling with zero-based budgeting, this becomes, let's spend as drunken sailors and build crazy budgets, which we used to do in Fall River, and then say, oh my God, the state's not gonna fund it, and then say, oh my God, we gotta cut, and then the pink slips, and every, which you could have avoided if you didn't say, we're gonna get to, you know, and then the, the pink stuff is there. If positions aren't in the budget, there's no need for pink slips. You get what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying. All I'm saying is that I think we all need to agree through this process, that we're not technically doing a zero-based budget.
We're using a hybrid.
And, and I, all I would ask is that, we have conversations like we had today, which I think were very good. The principals got to hear value judgments. Quite honestly, I don't think that enough of the principals came up with value judgments to say, with, we can take X position and do it differently than Y position or something. I don't think that that necessarily was, was the, what I heard from this session. So I think we need to, to look at, if we're gonna truly throw everything on the table and say, let's figure out a way we can do things differently to help kids and help our district move, that's